All right, let's go ahead and call our work sessions to order. I'm going to start with a quick review of tonight's agenda and I will pause after each item to kind of let people so ask any questions they may have for their staff. First, is there going to be any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none, we I don't believe we have any response, any public comment last week.
There is no comment.
And then anybody sign up yet?
Not yet.
All right, then we go to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from November 20th, and our library advisory board. From there, we'll go to our new business that has our contract approval for the design of design for Portland, the Sandy Water Filtration Plant Transmission System, and a resolution 2023-35, the SBC charges for commercial to residential use conversions. After those items, we'll round off the evening, report from Tyler, and then our committee and talks reports. With that, Tyler, will you call the role?
I object to it.
No, actually, I want to hear you.
Would you like me to call the planning commissioners soon?
Just just council.
Just council, okay, so councilor Mayen.
President.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hopkinson.
Mayor Pullman. Here, and thank you to our planning commissioners for showing up for this joint work session. Now, if that Tyler, would you like to take this off, please?
Sure thing. Thank you, Mayor and Council and planning commissioners for being in attendance this evening. And as you know, we are now in the latter stages of updating our comprehensive plan. So far, the council has discussed and approved revised goals for a multitude of different policies ranging from transportation and infrastructure to parks and trails. The final block of policies that remain to be discussed involve housing economy and growth management. And so we're planning to bring that discussion to the council in the spring. But before we dive into that final block with policies for next year, we want to discuss, present and discuss the results of some required background studies that will provide the basis for setting our comp plan policies around housing and the economy. And so tonight, we will be discussing the housing capacity analysis. It may have been referred to you previously as a housing needs analysis or HNA. For all purposes this evening, it's HCA, but just to clarify that going in, it's been used or changed before in the past. So HCA from this point forward. We're trying to perform that every eight years, and the last one that we've done was in 2015. And so just as a reminder or a point of information, an HCA measures the demand for different types of housing, measures available supply for land for housing across different zones, and analyzes the affordability for housing within our city. We have Beth Goodman and Nicole Underwood from Echo Northwest here to present the draft HCA this evening. And we'll be using the information from this HCA to create housing goals and policies in block three of the comp plan in spring, which already mentioned. After Beth and Nicole did their presentation, we have Carrie Richter here. Carrie is an attorney with Bateman Seidel. Did I say that right? Some of you may know Carrie from previous interactions with the city. And so she'll be here to discuss housing-related legislation and answer any questions the council has. And when that all turned over to Kelly, if you want to say anything, or this turns over to Beth.
All right, well, indeed, thank you. Let me get the presentation up here and going and presented on Zoom. Do we need to speak into the microphone or anything?
You're good, sure. They pick it up well. These don't amplify in the room. They're for the recorded audience.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you for having us here this evening. What we're going to do is we're going to walk through a presentation about key information in your housing capacity analysis, and I like to take questions as we go along. So if you have questions, please stop me. And I think if anybody on the any of the commissioners on the Zoom meeting have questions, I'm hoping that Tyler or somebody will.
Myself and Jeff try to keep an eye on it.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. So as Tyler mentioned, this is part of the broader comprehensive plan project where we're starting with background reports, helping understand where we are now. Of course, you worked on the vision statement. All of that information goes into your goals and policies and into your comprehensive plan update. So this is really about the background reports. A city does a housing capacity analysis because it's legally required, first of all. For cities that are over 10,000 people, they're required to do it every eight years if they're outside of the metro UGB, which you all are. Beyond that, it's useful for updating information in your comprehensive plan. So it gives you more recent information about housing costs and housing affordability and your housing market and how it's performing, your buildable lands inventory, other sorts of things. And it's also used to help determine whether Sandy has enough land within its urban growth boundary to accommodate expected population growth over the next 20 years. So all of those considerations are sitting in the back of why we do a housing capacity analysis. Looking at this a little bit more detailed, this project is the things in the blue, the housing capacity analysis and your comprehensive plan update. They lead to your housing production strategy, which we'll be talking with you next year about. And so the housing capacity analysis tells us what's your unmet housing need in Sandy. And then in the housing production strategy, we say, what are we going to do about that? And so that's a series of discussions that we'll have with you through next year and into 2025. They may result ultimately in some changes to your zoning code or changes to housing policies or new programs or or other things. Those are all policy questions for a later point. So I'm going to hand this over to Nicole, who can talk some about Sandy's housing needs.
Thank you, Beth. So to understand Sandy's housing needs, we first need to understand who lives in Sandy and how has that been changing over time. And so this slide in the next shows some key trends that are important to building a housing capacity analysis. So as you can see here, Sandy has an estimated 2023 population of about 13,877 people. Sandy's been growing faster than the county and state over the past 20 years at an annual average growth rate of about 4% compared to 1% at the county and state level. And Sandy has a relatively higher median household income. It's about equal with the Clackamas County, but definitely higher than the state, which is about 65,000. And notably, the median household income in Sandy has also been increasing faster than the county and state. Sandy's also been growing in racial and ethnic diversity. About 1 in 10 residents in Sandy identify as Latino or Hispanic, and that has also been increasing over time. Next slide. And so then also looking at household size and composition, Sandy generally has larger household sizes with more children. About almost 50% of households in Sandy, or 46%, have households with children in them, and that's compared to the state at about 25% and the county at 30%. And so then Sandy also has a larger share of a younger working age population. Those are the people between the ages of 20 and 39. And however, while Sandy does have that lower, younger population, the population overall is still aging, and the median age has increased over the past decade. So when considering housing needs, we also look at the commuting and job trends, and that helps us understand how Sandy fits within the broader regional economy. Commuting out of Sandy is very common. About 5,200 people live in Sandy and commute to jobs elsewhere. Then you have about 3,700 jobs. This is covered employment data as well. So this about 3,700 jobs are in Sandy. 20% of those are held by people who live and work in Sandy. That's the 753 number you see at the bottom. And then about 2,900 people commute into Sandy for work. We also looked at the average wages in Sandy, and those are just under $44,000. So then we need to examine how income has changed over time and how that relates to housing costs. And so, as I mentioned previously, the median household income in Sandy has been increasing, and it increased 33% between 2015 and 2020. But when we disaggregated that data by owner and renter households, we did find that renter households actually had a decreasing income over that period. Meanwhile, housing costs have been increasing, the average asking rent.
Can you just kind of explain why that you think that is? Why this renter household income has decreased 10%?
As far as the decreasing, I'm not entirely sure, but I can tell you that I think you've been increasing likely because you've been having potentially wealthier households move to the area. And so I think that has probably boosted some of the income in the area. As far as the renter households decreasing, Beth, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, you've got a limited amount of renter housing in Sandy, so it may well be that you don't have a large renter base. And then when we look at incomes for people who live and work in Sandy, your your average wages are lower in Sandy in comparison to the broader region. And so it may well be that some people are managing to live and work here. And the wages for people who are working here just are are not growing up very fast.
Sure.
Thank you. Do you remember how many units we have in the Avonir complexes?
Ultimately.
Which one?
I actually I actually don't know that number. So anything I gave you would just be entirely.
You have a hunch or something?
Well, yeah, because the previous slide, we talked about how our average age is going up. We have two very large facilities that are catering to people on fixed incomes in that elderly. Well, elderly, I haven't married that, so. In that older category, so there could be a correlation there potentially.
You have another one that just opened.
And another one is just, yeah, so I mean that we are specifically looking for a certain demographic to those units. And they're they're not going to be in the workforce.
I don't know if those, that was your income, correct? I don't know if there's people that live in Avonir have reportable income.
They probably have a small reportable income, like there's a security.
Yeah, I mean.
I think we are, but that's a percentage increase, you know, it there just there could be other things, that's all.
I think retirees are also a large component of who's moving to Sandy. They're, you know, fixed incomes, but but they have the equity from the house they sold. Things like that.
I think the important thing here is that while all incomes for all households are increasing, renter household income is not increasing. I think that's that's the salient point there. And then when you look at average rent, average rent is increased faster than incomes. And so when you think about that for renter households, it's it's a bigger punch. We'll see some data about that.
So I love data, and I love to question data.
Sure.
But there's kind of an implication there. Renter households have decreased. But that flies in the face of so many different factors in terms of the job market, increased minimum wage. What's the story that you're getting at there? Why has it decreased? There's got to be something, otherwise what's the point of making it red?
Well, the point of making it red is that what we're seeing, and if it's decreased, you know, 5% or 10% or 15%, this data is, you know, a sample data. We know the direction of it, which is down. And so the important thing here is that renter how income isn't increasing with all household income. Renter income is at best staying stagnant, if not going down somewhat. While your renter prices are increasing. And so the exact causes, we might be able to ferret some of that information out by digging into the data. But I suspect you're right. You're looking at growth in your aging population who has a fixed income. As we get a little bit more information here in a few minutes, what you'll see is that renter households have a lot more problem affording housing in Sandy than all households. So it's it's that broader point that that you've got two different directions of income.
Okay, thanks.
More than enough. I broke my heart. Yeah, just super quick, the asking rent that's increased and then the home sale price increased. Is that is that you're are you seeing that statewide or are we hired and?
Yes, no, we're seeing a lot of this statewide.
I assume such, I just wanted, yep, thanks.
Yeah, you're not special in that way.
And yeah.
Be careful now, we're special.
You're special in other ways. And so just, you know, finishing up this slide to build up what, you know, Beth was saying is that the overall takeaway is is incomes are not keeping pace with a lot of these housing costs. And so you're seeing, you know, that even the median home sales price is increasing much faster than your overall income increases. So next slide. And so get kind of gets to that key question of how are these rising housing costs impacting those who live and work in Sandy? And 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 one of our key findings is that many people who work in Sandy may not be able to live here. And so some important numbers to note on this slide as we move through it is that the average asking rent that we have here is about $1,000, $1,840. That's inclusive of utilities, and then the median home sales price of 475,000. And so what we looked at were how much people earn in Sandy and then what they're what they can afford in housing costs, and then compare that to the average rent and the median home sales price. And so what you see here is a single worker household earning the average wage in Sandy, which is about $44,000, can afford 1,100 in monthly housing costs. And that's assuming they spend up to 30% of their income on housing, which is a pretty common percent used to understand affordability. And and so at $1,100 monthly housing cost, they can't afford that $1,800 average rent, and they cannot afford the median sales price. A two-worker household where both earners are earning that average wage make about 88,000. They make that's about $2,200 in housing costs that they can afford. And with that, they can afford the average asking rent, but they are still unlikely to be able to afford the median home sales price on those wages alone. And then we did this scenario for a couple of different different wage scenarios. And so we looked at food service, which is typically a lower wage job. And what we found there is a two-worker household where both earn those wages cannot afford the average rent or a median home sales price. We then looked at what is considered generally a higher wage job, which is manufacturing, and a single worker household that earns a manufacturing wage earns about 65,000 in Sandy. And even on that wage, a single worker household would struggle to afford the the average rent. And and then they can't, 1,600, they, you know, they're they're still, they're getting closer, but they're still a little bit below. And then that two-worker household earns about 130,000. And so they can comfortably afford that that rent, but they would still struggle for that median home sales price on those wages alone. And I think I saw a hand.
Yeah, your food service, if we do a minimum wage, minimum wage, if they're fully employed throughout the year, it'd be more like 20, 29,000 a year, not 23,000.
And so this information is based on information reported by businesses that are located in Sandy for wages for their workers. So it's entirely probable that your average wage for your food service worker is reflecting the fact that they're not getting full-time employment, even if they had full-time employment at $28,000. That wouldn't change any of the the Xs and the checks.
I just pointed out for accuracy, I mean.
Yes.
And if we're going off that and they're working two or three jobs, it wouldn't be reflected either.
That would not be reflected yet.
So the comedic, you're making work a hard time in two or three different places and it's a lot better, so.
They could be, yes.
And and yeah. And Beth, I was actually, unless there's other questions, I was actually.
Yeah, I have another question.
Yes.
Where are you getting your information in terms of the housing? And I I happen to have access to some pretty specific real estate numbers here, and they're a little bit different than yours.
Yeah.
Quite a bit, actually, in some places. You were saying the average house sold in Sandy is 375.
475.
475. The average I got this 2023 is 450,000. So a little bit different. And then the other piece that I'm concerned about is is that when you're saying a family earning a certain amount, let's say 100 grand or so, can only afford a certain size of house, are you reflecting in there things like down payments that reduce the price of the house? But they have the mortgage and that kind of thing, or are you just saying that's there's no other variables in there?
So.
Not that I want to get into the details. I don't want to get into the weeds a lot, but just trying to figure out how accurate your data is.
So let me let me start with the data. The rent data comes from CoStar, and we did a, we surveyed a few of the different multifamily complexes around here to get an understanding of what the rent data was. And then we added in an assumption for utilities, because those are not often included in rental costs. So that's where the rent data came from. The 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 home sales price data came from Redden, and that was for December 2023, 2022. And so those do fluctuate by month, but when you look at them over the the monthly amounts, if 475 was, it might have fluctuated from 450,000, but those are, you know, some of the the average costs that we're seeing. And then I think your other question was about.
To me, including. Income, how they did things with down payments and that kind of stuff. A lot of people, when they buy houses in this value, are usually coming in with some down payments and holding costs.
So absolutely, when we're looking at average wages, and when I'm saying that somebody that earns 130,000 would not be able to afford a median home sales price, that's assuming on just that income, and that's not including things like equity in a house that they're selling. As far as sales prices, I'm actually going to let Beth describe this a little bit better on how we make some of those assumptions.
So we assume a down payment, not necessarily 20%, because a lot of people don't make a 20% down payment. And a lot of these numbers were looking really different before interest rates went up. And so what we're seeing with interest rates of around 7% is that has priced a lot of people way out of the market. So we're we're trying to account for things like the basic utilities that you have each month, your your mortgage insurance costs, your your property tax costs. And of course, these are are rough estimations because they'll vary, and then some down payment usually, but not a full 20%.
I don't want to go into a lot of detail, but it sounds like your data is relatively close. Assume it's 2022 data.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say if I didn't say that.
Mine is 23 data, so, okay, all right.
I'm just going to point something out. When we use median and we're looking at stats, it's generally useless because it really doesn't reflect anything. It's one data point in hundreds potentially, right? More important to me would be like the sidebars, whether we're doing a 10% color, 90, or 20, and 80, or something like that. Because a decision of whether somebody in any one of these categories can or cannot buy a median-priced house doesn't tell me whether they can buy a house. Right?
Well, that's certainly true. You've got houses that are about half, houses are below the median, and about half the houses are above.
Right.
And the reason that we don't use something like average is because a high-priced house or several very unusually low-priced houses can really drag the average.
Absolutely. I'm just saying.
Darren.
The story is better told with this with those more than one data point.
Sure, sure. No, I I understand what you're saying. Um, I think the the bigger point here that we'll be making in a few minutes about this is that even looking at your manufacturing household with your two wage-earning households with about $130,000 per year, they might be able to afford the price of a house in Sandy, but they can't afford the the median house price.
Sure.
So there's a lot of houses there.
But it starts to paint a picture.
Correct.
Well, we can we can go look at our data. I don't remember if we had access to housing sales price data that was individual sales or not, or if you're looking at averages.
If I'm presented a report, I like to know the source and the little more data about what's in this.
That's that information is, the source of the data, that kind of thing, is included in the housing capacity analysis report. So. All right, so I'm going to go on and talk to you about affordability and a little bit of a broader perspective. And these are broader, more generalizations, but so that we can talk about affordability at all different levels. So when we talk about Clackamas County, for a household of four, the median household income is $114,000. A household of four with that median household income can afford about $2,800 amount in rent. And here we've given a high and a low for generally what they can afford for a home sales price.
And is that that 28% figure you base that on?
The $2,800 a month is based on the 30% of income spent on housing costs. The the high and the low of home sales price is is arranged around that a little bit. It's a little lower than that on one side, and it's a little higher than that on the other side. And the idea here is to represent the fact that different households can afford different things. And so what we know with a median sales price of around 450,000 or 475,000, there's not going to be a lot of houses on the market, I would be willing to bet, in the $300,000 range. There may be some certainly in the the 350 to 375 range. So that household might be able, that theoretical household, might be able to afford the cost of lower-cost housing in Sandy.
The problem with that is, is again, this is trying to find an average. This past year, there were 71 houses, which is a very small number of houses sold in 97055, but they started at $110,000 and worked their way up. That's a manufactured 110.
Right, right.
Probably a very poorly.
Yes.
Constructed, very bad-looking house, but it goes clear up to a million dollars too.
Certainly.
People who are looking for houses tend to go where they can afford.
They do. They do. So this helps us get a little construct that we'll we'll plug in in the next slide a little bit more about Sandy. So if you think about who's going to be building houses in the future, because this is as much about future housing as it is about your current housing stock. So most of your newly-built housing is going to be affordable at the highest income levels, unless you as a city have some intervention. So you have, say, more manufactured homes, hopefully not manufactured homes in poor condition. But newly-built housing is generally speaking going to be affordable at above 120% of median family income. Of course, there can be smaller units that are being built, but the the market on its own does that less commonly. And then you think about your middle-income households. So middle-income households are generally between, we'll say, 60% to 50% of median family income, up to 120%. And you're seeing in Oregon, especially, I know a little more about in the metro area. So we've done some feasibility analysis there. Specifically, at the higher ends, above 80% of median family income, you're seeing some housing prices that are becoming affordable to those middle-income households. And it's things like townhouses or cottage housing or duplexes that are beginning are are affordable to those middle-income households. But then you get below 50% of median family income, and the housing market, the private market, doesn't produce housing that is affordable in those income levels. That's income-subsidized housing, generally speaking. And of course, your rental housing that is built by the market barely get it built. That's affordable between 50 and 80%. It's usually affordable above 70 or 80% of median family income. It varies by by different housing market. And so when we look at newly-built housing, let's say that your average monthly housing costs of somewhere around $1,800 a month, that that's that's not your newly-built housing, that's your your average of all housing, but newly-built housing is probably going to be start to be affordable around 80% of median family income. So as we're thinking about newly-built housing, this is 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 part of of what we need to think about is where is it coming in in terms of affordability? So newly-built rental housing is probably affordable, you know, that that middle of middle income. Newly-built ownership housing is probably mostly affordable unless it's unless it's something other than single-family detached. It's probably affordable more above 120% of median family income. And so those are the the directions that we're seeing. Not uncommon, I'll say, in in the three-county area here, so in metro region, to have housing costs fall into those income buckets. And then when we look at your existing residents, we estimate that about 30% of your existing residents have income below $57,000. About half have that that income between 57,000 and 137,000. 20% have income above 137,000. So when you put this together with the information we have about people who work at businesses in Sandy, and then what we know about your existing household income distribution, we know that when you're talking about new housing, a lot of people are not going to be able to afford new housing, newly-built housing.
Could I, I just take, yep, take it back to that slide. Um, could I, I just take, yeah, take it back to that slide. One thing that really kind of uh annoyed me about that, many established homeowners could not afford current housing costs if they moved to Sandy today based on their MFI. Well, if they're a homeowner, they likely have equity and that's what they're using to buy another house. And so.
Yeah.
I, you know, that's kind of where, uh you know, especially if they retired or whatever, they, you know, that's kind of what they're using to to get another house. So that's a little bit disingenuous to say that, to make that statement.
Well, I would also.
If they had no equity, that might be the case.
Certainly, um I would also say that the interest rates are so fundamentally different than they were um. Back uh two, three years ago, um that even when you have uh are bringing some equity. Um, it's it's pretty tight um to make affordability work in a lot of cases. And I would say it depends on where they come. Uh where they come from. So if you come from a high uh a a place where housing costs were high.
I rented, I rented my house for al- almost ten years, so a third, a little, um about third of the time I lived here in Sandy. And so, but I think what's kind of um. What's been around or, you know, well, I hate to say that when I was younger, but.
Yeah.
You know, it's nothing new, just, and I mean, everybody in this room. Who owns a house probably had two people in, you know, both people, at least two people working.
Yes.
And so the idea that we're evaluating all this based on single family income. And saying, no, they can't afford it. Well, of course they can't. We don't set the prices for the houses.
No.
And we, and so I'm trying to get a an understanding, because we built. Huge amounts of small uh R two. Um, you know, three thousand square foot lots, all that stuff, the the lowest cost housing you can do. We've got duplexes, townhouses, all that other stuff. And yet here's what we have. Now, when we build, you know, Bailey Meadows or whatever they call it, Shaly Meadows now. Those had seventy five hundred foot square foot lots and those also sold for five hundred thousand dollars plus. And so when we build those, and we don't have very many at all, single, there's a huge amount of zoning here that's single family residential. But hardly any of that have developed at the minimum lot size of seventy five hundred for single family residential, which is what what I. And so what we see instead is that a lot of the fa- families that got those little starters home. Want to want to be able to put a swing set in that they don't, you know, the kid doesn't run into the fence because this yard is so small. So they want a bigger yard and and all that. And so many of those people, we don't have enough of a supply of seventy five hundred square foot lots. So they end up moving outside the city limits or to another community. And so that's where I see, you know, part of the problems, but. One of the things that happens when you build those larger lots is that your MFI goes up, right?
Uh, your median family.
Yeah, because, you know. Because it, because no matter what we build, people will buy it here. Because, you know, and so part of me feels like, you know, we already have a lot of small, you know, and and we can't control the fact that they're selling some. Peasy little, you know, twelve hundred square foot house on three thousand square feet or four hundred and seventy thousand or whatever they're getting for it. We don't have any control over that.
That is true. Um, you you do not. Um, uh, so what I would uh end up uh uh. Saying is that I don't think the findings of this analysis are that you need. A lot more smaller unit, a a lot more smaller lots. Um, there's a minor finding um uh about that. But what we're really finding here is that you need um to accommodate, if you want to be able to accommodate people who live and work in Sandy. Um, we'll just start with uh working in Sandy. A lot of uh single worker um households um can't afford to rent.
Okay, are you, the people that work in Sandy, right? Okay, so Sandy is a bedroom community. That should have been upfront. It's a bedroom community. Then that's what the jobs that we have in Sandy are mostly service oriented. There are some government, you know, the school district, the forest service, that's about it, I think. And so we're a bedroom community. Most everybody here goes to work somewhere else. So that's.
And that's what we showed here in in the commuting data, certainly.
Well, you didn't really show how many people in Sandy work outside of Sandy.
Uh, what we're showing is right here, that there's um. Uh, fifty two hundred people who live in Sandy who work outside of Sandy. Five thousand two hundred and twenty nine people who live in Sandy work somewhere else. Seven hundred and fifty people who work in Sandy live in Sandy. And about twenty nine hundred people who work in Sandy live elsewhere.
But I guess the point that could be said is, is that in Sandy, we're not supplying the kind of paid jobs it takes. Live here or count flip that, we don't have the kind of housing that allows for people who are working here with the kinds of jobs that we have to live here.
And that's, that's a key finding, and I would say that is not necessarily a normative finding. We're not saying that that's that's good or bad. We're describing. Uh, we're describing that condition.
The deal I see there is that Sandy is not a isolated as. Description of what we're talking about, because you get people who are fighting for the houses in Gresham. You have Estacada houses that are different priced. And it seems to me that as. It as things go through, this changes in markets and it's really a radical change this last six to nine months or so. It doesn't really just Sandy that's being affected, it's the entire metro area being affected.
But the truth is, right, we are a bedroom, to your point, we are a bedroom uh community, and that's not a bad. It's not a bad thing, that's the way we are, right? And our tourism, the way we're set up also doesn't allow for us to go get these jobs. Either we don't have a lot of industrial land, we're on the highway, people come and recreate in our community, we're a tourism based economy. So we're always going to have this problem presented to us, right? But it doesn't mean that we can't try to pull different levers and things to try to at least make it a little bit easier.
But I guess, and to go off of Councilor uh Walker's point is that. I think the people that live here found a way though, that you're sure. Or look at me, I'm a senior, I don't have any house payments anymore. My, I have one income because of the way I am, I can afford it. For those who can't live here, can't afford it. Find a way, the numbers show that. Or they're getting pushed out. Or they can't return. So what we're really talking about are people who don't fit the. Whatever that category is that we would like to have them here. And otherwise, people who move here can afford it.
Well, I I, you know, what what they've done is, you know, they've created a a capacity analysis. And and I think, I think that we're. And I think they've done a good job of what I've seen so far based off of some things that that I also know. So, you know, I think, I think we're getting a little. Worked up about some of the answers and maybe we don't like the answers per se, but that doesn't mean they're not the answers. And even if the numbers and the data aren't spot on, it's still like Stan said earlier. Paints a picture for where we're sitting, and I think that's informative for us to know all that information.
Yeah, and just one quick reminder for Darren is, the housing capacity analysis, as Tyler stated, we have to analyze this. Like this is not a, maybe, it's not a choice. And as Beth already loaded to in the future, because of, I think it's House Bill two thousand and three, attorneys correct me if I'm wrong. But um that's gonna make us evaluate what levers, as Stan just, as Mayor Pauline just said. What levers we're gonna try to have to pull to to fix that.
Yeah.
It's gonna require.
Don't, don't take that um my analysis of your analysis as being this is a bad deal. I I really appreciate the information. It may not be completely with what I have or somebody else may have, but it certainly is painting that picture of what I think is going on and I. I think, at least from my viewpoint, is is my passion and my interest in this area shows that I'm really interested in the data.
I, and and I'm glad. Um, I I wanted to mention that just looking at a little bit of the sales cost data in the HCA. Um, Estacada, Oregon City, Happy Valley, those are all cities that we compared um Sandy with. They'll have higher sales prices, especially Happy Valley.
That's why people come here.
Gresham's a little bit lower and Troutvale's a little bit lower um than in in terms of sale prices than Sandy, but they're they're playing around. Um, at at the same levels. Um, so, so you're playing a particular role in this broader region. You're a little further away. Um, like Gresham and and Troutvale, you know, right next to each other in Happy Valley. So you're a little further away. From the region and you have a different role in the regional economy, um as uh I think your mayor pointed out about tourism. Um, and that's going to result in in uh, you know, jobs that are important jobs, even though they. Don't necessarily have high pay, um but you know, trying to understand. Um, who can afford to to live and work in Sandy? That's that's a little bit of what we're trying to point out. Um, and then the other, the next piece of information.
Real quick. So I just wanted to emphasize that point because I am, you know, well in that middle income. Uh, section, I, we are two, four, uh person home, we have two incomes. We have twenty percent equity in our house that we can buy, but you know what? I can't afford the median, you know, income house in Sandy. You know, I am that person that Stan talked about being pushed out. Or looking to purchase houses in Sandy, and I can't, you know, and so that. Really resonates with me. We talked about how it doesn't make a lot of sense, but I'm sitting here thinking, that makes perfect sense to me. I'm living that, so. That's where.
I guess what I really need to explain to me at some point in this presentation is the fact that since we don't set the rents or the. More the sales prices on the houses, then. And and because sup- supply and demand, you know, everything that we do gets bought up and it doesn't really affect that, it doesn't make the price go down. Then why, you know, that that's where I'm confused because. Even doing all this analysis, if you if you don't have any control over what the house prices are going for, I'm just lost. But you don't have to explain it now, but at some point, that's kind of the connection I need to.
So it's a question of what is the city's role in the housing market? And cities, they they certainly control zoning, so some public policy, you've got a public policy role. Um, cities have a role around infrastructure, so you know, water, wastewater. Um, roads, that kind of thing, cities all uh have uh control over those. You have a role in. Your urban growth boundary and maintaining that is required by law. Um, and then cities can have other roles in in the housing market and they're more minor roles. Um, but the levers you have on things like market feasibility, so what rents are going to be charged. Those are smaller levers. Um, uh, and we'll talk about those kind of things in the housing production strategy. Um, but there are things that cities can do to support development of of different types of housing at different price points. But you're right, you're not going to um set the uh, set the price points and you're not going to control. Um, uh, most of the housing market, um but you do have a a a role in. In housing more broadly in Sandy. Yes.
Can you go back to that slide where you have the percentage of income? There's, I think there's the the next slide.
This one.
Yeah, if I'm looking at this right, you could, maybe, maybe it's on your, the slide goes after this because I previewed it, but if I look at this. You're saying you can't afford anything in Sandy at its at median price. But if you look at the first three columns, seventeen, fifteen and twenty four percent, that makes up all of the weights below that median income. That you were talking about, it it kind of excels why they can't afford it, right? I'm more interested now in hearing, and I'm sure you're gonna do it next, is, all right, the land that we have available in Sandy, what should we even be building there?
Okay, we'll go there in a few moments. I have one more slide around affordability. And that one's um about cost burden. Um, so you've probably heard the term, a household is said to be cost burden if they're paying. Thirty percent or more of their income on housing costs. So for rent, that's rent plus um some basic utilities like heat. And electricity. For um homeownership, that's mortgage, your interest. Your uh insurance um on the house and those same basic utilities. So overall, about a third, um thirty two percent of Sandy's households are cost burdened. And a few of those households are severely cost burdened. They pay fifty percent or more of their income on housing costs. When we look at renter households, um the rates of cost burden are much higher. And we've got a lot of red on this slide. This isn't all that different from a lot of communities in Oregon, especially in the metro region. Um, so more than fifty percent of of households and often more like fifty five percent of households. Who rent are cost burdened. Um, just because it's common doesn't mean it's 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 good. Um, but it's important to realize that of, you know, thirty three percent of renter households, so. Uh, a lot of your renter households are paying fifty percent or more of their income on housing costs. They're in real trouble. Um, and so that, that is a a key factor to consider and it's it's part of what. The state looks at when um it's looking at um availability of renter households. So how many? What percentage of your richer households are severely cost burdened? It's really common.
Are are your statistics um a derivative of calculations? Or are they, when you do a survey and you ask them, are you cost burdened?
Oh, no, 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 no. This comes straight out of the census. So everybody who answered the American Community Survey. Um, and so they're calculating, there's a certain percentage of households that don't give enough information. Um, so they're calculating, you know, what did you say your income was? What did you say your your rent costs and your utilities are? And the census is is doing this.
That's what I was looking for.
We didn't, we didn't have a big enough budget for them to go around.
No.
In in our office, I won't tell you all the details because that's private. And all that sort of stuff, but we have a dozen or so houses that are for rent and we like. People that are there long term and several of those, many of those are under market rents. Because we want those people to stay there. And so I'm just wondering, it sounds like this still is a calculation, assuming the census is correct and they didn't lie.
Well, I don't think they lied to us. Um, I think that the American Community Survey is a sample, and so it's got a certain margin of error. Um, and it is five year data. So recognize that this is um data from two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And twenty, all put together, sorry, um into.
Sorry, man, this is a super important topic, so if you have questions, I encourage you to continue to ask those, but I just want to recognition that we're on slide. Fourteen of thirty and that's six forty seven.
I'm so sorry.
No, no, it's. Do you, this is just a question, if you have it or not, um, this shows me that we have sixty eight percent of our homes. Of are uh not burdened. How does that compare statewide?
It's, it's, it's about um average. Um, it's it's about where a lot of communities are. Um, your level of cost burden for owners is a little lower than uh than some cities. But cost burden for owners is almost always lower, in part because it's uh hard to get a mortgage and then cost burden yourself.
I just wanted to know from a comparative standpoint.
So if you build, so, you know, a bunch of single family homes, seventy five hundred square foot lot. Would would the percentage of of people that are cost burdened go down? As an average?
Uh, I I think it's difficult to build your way out of this, especially um building your way out of. Uh, the owner, um ownership. Um, if you built a a lot of rental housing. Multi-family rental housing, um your rate of cost burden might go up.
I mean, building more when they can't afford what they already have doesn't really get you. Less cost burden.
Well.
The only way you. People cost burden is if you bring in more people who can afford houses.
On the idea that greater supply um can lower rents.
Supply and demand.
Greater supply of of multi-family housing at a large enough scale.
But the rent aggression is. You know, that has huge amounts of apartments is no different than in Santa.
I think we can get on, I think we can totally debate all day if we could ever reach that scale, right, to to make.
And I'm not suggesting that you can.
Sure, that's, but that's the general concept behind.
And so I'm gonna move us on, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so this is just a data slide, so we'll be talking about um uh. Uh, housing mix in a little while. So about seventy nine percent of your existing housing is single family detached housing. That includes manufactured housing. About ten percent is multifamily housing with five or more units. And the rest is uh townhouses, duplexes, tries and quads. We'll talk about the those in a few more moments, but first we're gonna move on to the multiple lands inventory. And so what we did is, this is the supply of land in Sandy. We started with all land. Um, where you can build housing, um so you have a comprehensive designation uh that allows housing to develop. Um, and things like village, um low density residential, medium density residential, potential and high density residential. And within that, your different zoning districts um within each of those comprehensive plan designations are there. So Commissioner Walker, you asked me earlier if uh if your SFR was grouped. With your, I think it was R one, um and yes, it is because most of that is under low density. Um, there is some of that also in village. Um, so they're they're separated by their comprehensive plan designations. Um, and so, and we didn't assume that all commercial land would have uh housing on it. We assumed that a portion of it would have housing on it.
Can you clarify that a little bit more?
Sure.
That's kind of what, you know, I mean, now that we're, you know, we're. Because that's kind of what, you know, I mean, now that we're, you know, required to allow all sorts of residential and stuff on commercial and of course on village. Then. We have a lot of.
Clarify that um, percentage in a few minutes. Okay, great. We looked at constraints, so things like the floodway in the floodplain areas that you have uh. Landslide susceptibility, um, slopes over twenty five percent, your stream setbacks, your BPA easement, the. FSH overlay, um, everywhere where you have a color on this map. So you've got a constraint, um, even if the land was vacant, we considered it unbuildable. Because um, you don't build where you've got those kind of constraints. Um, so this li- um, map shows the uh. The uh, inventory of buildable land and we'll get to the numbers in a few moments, but if you look at the stripe across the top, that's uh, one that just. That shows that BPA easement is considered unbuildable. Um, and so then when we looked at how much buildable land you have. Um, you've got about four hundred and twenty acres in LDR. Most of that is in SFR. You've got about sixty acres in your MDR, twelve in your HDR. Your village, which includes um, a little bit of commercial, um, the majority of it is. Is uh, residential, you've got a hundred fifty one acres. And then in commercial, you had about a hundred and twenty eight acres, mostly in general commercial. And I know that. That uh. That Nicole is looking for what percentage of uh, housing we uh, of land in general commercial, we assumed. Would be developed with housing, but it was uh, substantially less than than fifty percent tonight. I can't remember.
I thought it was like twenty acres or something.
Yeah, it was a a fairly small number. You can look at the capacity analysis. Okay, well, we'll have to come back and and answer that question.
It's it's fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent. Um, now, of course, um, some of the new state rules, um. They haven't taken effect yet necessarily, and so they aren't factored into this. Um, uh, and you could get more housing in commercial um, than what we're talking about, but. We assume that fifteen percent of your commercial land would develop with housing. Um. And so that leaves about seven hundred and seventy one acres of buildable land. Before I go on. And uh, go for the last uh, last couple of slides. Do you have any questions?
I will say in this came in no surprise, uh, because when we did the last buildable. Lands inventory and housing, what it was called a housing needs analysis at the time of two thousand fifteen, we've now changed the name, of course. We then followed that up with the UGV expansion in two thousand seventeen. That was a very large UGV. Over a square mile of residential land, so that this these results didn't surprise me at all from going through that process eight years ago.
Are you gonna let us know or did you calculate? Or estimate how? Um, difficult it is to build in some of these different zones, for example, in my my world, the village. Has been almost uninhabited in the last.
You mean the village commercial?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
One building in that area, so it's really difficult to build, even though it's available for some percentage of. Residential.
Yeah.
How about the rest of those?
I would agree. It's it is, if you look at the total numbers, though, it's only four acres of over seven hundred, so it's. It's just such a small amount that I wouldn't. Consider.
In that fact, okay.
Exactly.
How about the rest of them? Uh, so some areas are more. Premium than others. Did you even look at that kind of?
Well, yeah, just this subtracts out all the constraint.
Okay.
Yes.
Not so much eliminated, but some parts of the city are more. Desirable than others. So up against the BPA line, it's tougher to sell a house than it is a out on the viewpoint. Points along the breaks of the sandy.
We did not account for that.
Okay.
We estimated capacity for new housing based on the density of housing that had been developed and the densities that are allowed. At this point.
Because some of these acres, even though they're available for residential, they're just sitting there.
Yeah, and that's that's certainly an 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 issue. Um, when we go uh, to answer the question, do you have enough land to accommodate population growth? You wanna, I'm sorry, ask the question before I go on?
Um, well, the question I'm gonna ask maybe in the next time, but. So now, you know, for example, single family residential, we have four hundred and eighteen acres. Uh, that's the units per acre, you know, used to be. Five point six and now we can do double that densities. The medium density, we could do uh, fourteen units per acre, but now if there are duplexes, we're supposed to allow twenty eight. So. Everything has doubled now, thanks to the state legislation, and so my question is. When you get to this next step on these acres. You know, did you assume the five point six acres or did you assume, you know, the duplexes that would like more likely get built because they're allowed to?
So we assume densities that were consistent with uh, with what had been historically developed. Um, uh, I believe. So no, we didn't double it. Um, you're required by state law to look at what has uh, what has happened. Um, and not necessarily um, uh, what theoretically could be built there. So in low density for SFR, we assume. Um, a density of three point seven dwelling units per gross acre. So that accounts for land for rights of way. Um, and for the R one, we assumed five point four dwelling units per gross acre.
So you can't assume that they're gonna, I mean, they're certainly not gonna double. But but you can assume they're gonna go up.
You can't assume they're gonna go up and we could assume a small increase in density, but we can't um, without. Uh, uh, substantial evidence, assume a large increase in density.
But like, again, all of Sandy Bluff developed at R one densities.
But that, but it.
Five thousand square foot lots.
Making a density assumption that's higher doesn't really benefit the city.
So here, let me go on and and continue with the answer and I can tell you why. Uh, uh, why this matters some and and why it doesn't matter in some ways. So here's the the forecast for new housing that. Um, over the next twenty years, you'll add um, two thousand four hundred and twenty four new dwelling units. About sixty percent, the majority of them would be single family detached. Um, and twenty eight percent would be uh, multi-family and that split there is based on. Uh, what we're seeing about need for affordable housing. We need a little more rental housing than you currently.
How how did you come up with these uh, numbers? Um, but you had a demand column on something and I was just wondering where these numbers came from.
We came up with these numbers through discussion um, with our advisory committee and with city staff and looking at the information about housing needs. Um, so we know that you you need a. A a fair number of new single family detached housing, but you also need. A larger share of housing that is rental housing and that's going to be majority. A multi-family, maybe it'll be a little bit of the townhouse duplex or triplex. Um, so that's why we increased the shares there. Um, and then here, keep going with me. You've got capacity for development of more of this. Um, then uh. Uh, than you necessarily need. So when we looked at uh, your SFR at that three point seven dwelling units an acre. On your vacant land of about four hundred and eighteen acres, you have capacity for about one thousand. One hundred and forty five dwelling units. We allocated demand to SFR. Um, based on your overall forecast and what we see is you've got a lot of more. Capacity in SFR than you necessarily technically need. You don't have much land um, in your low density in R one, R R one at this point. And so we we didn't get into um, separating out between SFR and R one in your low density zone. Um, you can see that in your medium density zone, we figured most development would happen in your R two. And you have just about just a little tiny bit more capacity than you need. In your high density zone, you've only got a hundred and seventy two. Uh, dwelling units of capacity because you only have twelve um, acres of high density land. You don't have a lot of land for high density, which is where a lot of your um, uh. Uh, multi-family would go. Except in the village, you have some some high density, so R three in there.
Excuse me, Kelly, does this include, you know, we're getting two hundred uh, almost a hundred ninety two apartments at Deer. Beer full run or Deer Point or whatever, we're getting uh.
I don't know what name it is.
Then we're getting all those apartments over at Thornstead at the Cascade Creek or whatever it's called. Does this?
I.
Include that or?
I don't believe that, I don't believe it includes. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe it includes. Development that has been approved by land use, but has not been constructed. This is only, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And so you know where a fair bit of your your multi-family development is going to go because it has been permitted. Um, uh, but it is not yet developed. We considered the land where those units were permitted as vacant still. Because we're looking at growth over the twenty twenty three to twenty forty three period. Um, and so in twenty twenty three, those units have still not been developed, so the people who live in those units, they're not here yet. Um, they'll be here in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, whatever, whatever the year is.
Yeah.
Um, but as we look at these numbers being kind of in the know.
Yes.
And you can kind of go, okay, we can assume this project's gonna go towards this.
Yes.
Cool.
Um, and the answer here is, for the most part, you have more capacity than you need. Um, the only deficit you have is in the R two. And it's a, it's a small deficit. Um, I think it's about eight acres of R two land in the village. And so the question the city has to ask is how it's going to accommodate. That deficit and land uh, housing in R two is is more likely to be, and I don't have the the exact allocation right here. But it's more likely to be things that are. Are smaller scale, single family housing on to things like duplexes, quadplexes, townhouses. And maybe some small scale multi-family housing. Um, so there's a small deficit. You could accommodate that deficit. Um, in uh, in the village in the R three, you could accommodate some of that in other places. So there's a small question, but there's there's no large problem here.
Doesn't that really show though that the C two is where some focus should be looked at because you can accommodate the village. Through other residential SFRs, but you can't do that with commercial. Then you have zero surplus for commercial.
Well, you've got zero surplus for commercial because we set it at fifteen percent of commercial land.
So that's what you're doing, you were setting the demand.
Uh, uh, we set that one specifically so that it would balance out, so that we weren't consuming any more commercial. Um, than than what we were talking about here.
But if it develops higher, you're like more more residential.
Yes.
Higher density and if the R two, regular R two, five hundred eighty two acres develops. At, you know, not the single family, but you know, all the twenty eight duplexes per acre that we're allowed to now do. Which, my experience for being up here for thirty years of land use planning in Sandy, they get as many as they can generally.
That is true.
If that's the case, that things develop based on what they can legally do. Then I would assume that we wouldn't have a deficit of R two units. Because we could easily make up seventy units in. Five hundred eighty two acres, getting twice, you know, get even if a portion of that develops as.
Certainly.
Yeah.
And realize that the twenty eight dwelling units an acre estimate you're using in your head. Isn't consistent with the estimate that we're talking about here, because that doesn't account for things like land for rights of way. And the fact that you can very rarely build out at a hundred percent. Of the density, you usually build out at more like eighty or ninety percent of the density. Um, that's allowed, um, plus um, accommodating um, uh, man for rights of way, which is sometimes, you know, twenty percent or more.
I'm here to tell you, though. The the areas that I'm familiar with and I was testifying for over the years. Developed at a at a much higher density than it was known for.
So the the, so here's a really good example you can think of. Because it's applicable and you can go and look at it tomorrow. The development right across from the police station that's being constructed, that's nine duplexes. That is a, that is one point one acre, so slightly larger than an acre. And he's putting eighteen units. And he is maxing it out. There's like no. I don't know how he could squeeze any more units, even, you know, within a year, he'll be done, Tom Worth will be done and then you can go check it out, but. So that'll be about eighteen A, about. Eighteen units on one point one acres.
But the density would have allowed on paper for what?
What was that zone depth?
Fourteen. But with the doubling effect, but I don't think we can get twenty eight on that. Not twenty eight duplex units on an acre.
For that, but that's my point. That's the point I'm trying to.
You can't get that.
That he couldn't.
Yeah, you can't get it. Councilor Walker's correct, he's proving that you can get more than the fourteen.
Yes, you can't get more than the.
But I I don't think you can get twenty eight.
But yeah, with the required setbacks and the right way.
And.
Utilities, parking, street trees.
Setback.
Everything else, yeah, setbacks, trees, retention trees, all that stuff, yeah.
I think with Kelly's example that he just gave, we did a little bit of analysis and if you were to. Shrink that down to one acre, it was closer to sixteen units in total, not. That's correct. Twenty two, I guess, in that. I think both are right. I think Kathleen's right, that that developer's gonna try to squeeze as much as they possibly can, but I think the other side's right that there's constraints to that.
Yeah, just just not gonna. I have a question about the village.
Right.
Because the village has been just historically undeveloped or underdeveloped, I'll leave it that way. Uh, how do we get deficits in the village? Is that something that's a calculation issue? Or uh, how do we get that?
Remember, these are only the residential zoning districts within the village, not the village commercial.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, the whole purpose of doing the village, I thought, was for combining commercial and residential, and that's why you called it a village. What we found out is that that doesn't really work. That was kind of a fantasy of planners that thought they'd be able to kind of develop it like the little Irish town.
Like the Sims game or something.
You know, they had little shops and all that and then people living above all that. Well, that's, you know, people are going to Fred Meyer's and all that, so so that's not the situation, so. So we haven't seen any commercial develop in our village at all, and so all we have is residential, so it's just like all the R two and R three and R one, right?
Um, I think I think Councillor Exner did allude to that. We have seen one success story in the village commercial, but by and large, I agree with you.
What was it?
Success.
It went over and launched.
The the daycare facility, the childcare facility, and they do have plans to double it at some point. But yeah, other than that, there's no other success stories, I would agree.
So, yeah, I mean, we talked about, you know, getting rid of the whole village thing, because.
And I agree, but that'd be as, that would be like a comprehensive plan policy and then we'd have to do that through that.
Yeah.
And I don't think, I don't think you'll get.
Process or but.
Not part of what Beth and Napoleon are doing, but that could be a policy or goal coming out of the.
Because it's a, it's a gift basket for that.
And I and I don't think you're gonna get any pushback from any of those problems either, so.
Different process.
So, in any case, um. We've we've got a little deficit. Um, we'll be talking with staff about uh, how to accommodate this deficit. Um, housing costs. It has, you know, plainly outpaced income growth, that's true across Oregon. Many people who work in Sandy can't afford to live in Sandy. And a lot of existing residents can't afford the current um, sales prices, um, and and some of them can't afford the current rent prices. Just why you see um, the high rates of rent burden. Um, and then um. What Sandy has done um, in allowing a wider range of housing types, um, is part of uh, part of our last piece. That Sandy needs a wider range of housing types to actually develop. To accommodate renters and homeowners' needs um, at varying income levels. And that takes us back to um, where this will go into uh, uh, into next. And that's what we're finding, so. Uh. That's where we'll pick up as we uh, start with the housing production strategy. Of talking about things like, do you want to change how the village is uh, planned designated and and do you want to change some zoning in the village? Um, and I I could easily see that being a a specific action to take in the housing production strategy.
So we required to adopt or accept your findings?
Yeah, and we'll be doing that at a future hearing. Uh, we had, this is a state of Oregon. Of the housing capacity analysis and the economic opportunities analysis, which already been presented to you. And then we would have to adopt them by ordinance. So that that would be be coming before you in the winter, in the next few months.
So they technically become background documents.
For the comprehensive plan, that's correct.
I think that.
So if we were to get rid of village, does that reduce, does that get rid of our deficit in the village?
Um, I, we we need to talk about uh, before you can adopt it, you have to address it. So we need to talk with staff about this, so. So.
Okay, yeah, but that could be one of the solutions to accommodate part of the acreage.
Mm-hmm, and it's a small issue.
Where would you see that deficit getting flopped? Just as as an opinion, I don't look for a decision. Instead of being at villages and being gone. There's a compensatory plan, comprehensive plans, you think. Where would you normally expect to see that puppy land?
I mean, I, I think we could take some of the village commercial potentially and turn it into R two. I think we could take some of the R three within the village and turn it into R two.
Yeah.
Um, I think you could potentially even take some of the R one in the village and turn it into R two. I don't, based on the low amount of acreage, only being eight acres, I don't see the need to take SFR and turn it, although you could, ought to do that if you choose to.
There's not a lot of SFR.
It's the trim here and there, okay, got it.
Oh, true, yeah.
So you mentioned that we have to address it to adopt it. What if we don't adopt it? I'm just always curious.
If you don't adopt the HCA.
Yeah.
Then we'll be in trouble with the state of Oregon on the housing production.
I know, this is where I'm going.
Okay, you know the answer then.
Well, kind of, but you said, I just don't understand what the deficit. Well, kind of, but you said, I just don't understand what the definition of trouble is, and I'm the kind of guy that always wants.
The, I mean, I, I would let the lawyers speak to that, but just reading through the legislation, it could be as far as them coming over and taking our planning.
But taking you?
Well. I don't know, maybe I guess.
Yeah, I mean, he's like, that's the word. Yeah, right.
No, but it, it could lead to penalties up into, which I don't think anyone's anticipating around the state, but DLCD taking over the planning for the city.
Okay, because that's where I'm trying, I've tried with this legislation to really figure out where the teeth is, right? So it sounds like that's kind of a little bit worse.
Sure, in some aspect, it would limit any sort of future grant lifting from the LC.
Yeah, we do that too, yeah.
Fines.
Which is.
Has there been any discussion? Have we heard anything?
Not that.
I haven't heard, but I think it will come.
I, I think Ty, I, I think Tyler is correct. You know, we, just in the last couple of years, we've gotten um, from ODA and DLCD several hundred thousand dollars in grant money for these sorts of projects, and that would be eliminated.
Sure.
So, in terms of, why wouldn't we pass this thing is, is that even though we may not agree completely with all the data and that kind of stuff, I, I think it's roughly on the right track, and I think it's telling us the right thing. Uh, the eight acres is kind of weird stuff, but we'll figure that out. To me, it, it isn't one of those things that we would say, well, cut off her nose, it's like the base.
I don't disagree, I just would require to do something. I wanna know what happens if I don't do it.
I, I hate.
Yeah.
So, what's happened before the state legislature got involved in zoning and local land use planning for us was that we ourselves took a lot of our SFR and developed it as R one densities. So what we've heard over years is that, again, people do not have the ability to kind of get slightly larger homes for their families that garden or what have you. And when they are available, they get bought up pretty quickly. So now what we have is all, you know, is basically SFR is becoming, you know, R one and R one's becoming R two, and, you know, it's kind of getting this bumped up. So we've already had it already developed as higher than it was zoned as, and now we're basically allowing, you know, almost double the densities of everywhere else. And so that's where, you know, because of what we already did and because of what they're now allowed to do, I'm just having trouble, you know, I'm just seeing that there's just this continuous push for more density, higher, more acres of higher density. And again, what I see the need is for Sandy is to, you know, have a balance. I, you know, let me be clear, I want a balance. I'm not all about single-family residential. We need a balance. But what's happened is we don't have a balance anymore. We lost, you know, the stuff that was zoned SFR is, was not developed as that. And now that it is, you know, zoned there, then it's, you know, cannot, can be zoned as, as higher than, you know, the higher densities. And so, given all those kind of things happening, how do we meet the need that I've heard from a lot of people that they want some, you know, more seventy-five hundred square foot lots? Um, single-family homes.
Can I take that opportunity to get Beth and Nicole out of the hot seat and introduce our next speaker?
Yes.
We have a next speaker?
Yeah, that's.
Because we're moving more into state legislation discussion, uh, than housing capacity analysis.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, this is, we're gonna work. Go ahead, while her.
I'll just, I'll leave in my comments. Obviously, I'm, I'm not happy with some aspects of this, particularly the sensitivity in the numbers. And the way we're interpreting them, I feel like there is an agenda woven into the way the numbers are presented. When we do SDCs, we adopt the methodology, correct? Before we do the SDCs, that's part of that. Did we adopt the methodology as part of the housing, uh, the HCA, or is it just a methodology that comes with our vendor?
It's a standard methodology used around.
Is it, is it dictated by the state, or is it just used by everyone within the state?
It's, it's safe harbor so that if it was appealed to Luba, that we would be firm, confirmed, brand.
Um, I'd love to see this spec, if it's easily available, or can be said to me. If not, I don't want any additional time spent on it, because the end result.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
This is relatively harmless, so that's fine, I'll just.
But.
I'm on topic.
Or, or, or why don't you follow up after the meeting and ask for it? I think you should.
Yeah, you can.
Totally have a right to the information.
Yeah, I agree. I would just say a little more detail exactly what you're looking for, but yeah. If you wanna send that, that to me, you know, I can work with that.
Yeah, could do that.
Thank you.
All right, cool. Thank you, really.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate your presentation. And now we'll invite Carrie Richter up to talk about state housing.
I don't know how this PowerPoint presentation is gonna work, so. Thank you. I don't like how I can't see everyone.
I don't know how many.
Can I sit over here?
Get free to sit where.
And this.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. For, for those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Carrie Richter, and I'm a land use lawyer with the law firm Bateman Seidel. Um, I was, when I was a brand new lawyer, I represented the city of Sandy with Jack Hammond. That was one of my very first gigs at a law school. So it's nice to be back here with you all. I have, uh, represented Lila Leathers for a long time, uh, Skipper family, so I've, I haven't been here in many years, but I'm, uh, I, I am, I am familiar with, with some of the growing pains going on in Sandy. Uh, and I am also a municipal lawyer. Uh, our office represents the city of Oregon City, city of Sandy. Uh, lot of beach communities, so I'm familiar also with, um, how the state legislation is landing with local governments and the friction that it's causing, um, for lots of different reasons. So I, um, am grateful for the opportunity to talk to you. My plan is to talk for about thirty minutes and then, uh, get through about eight slides and then, uh, take your questions and your comments and try to be as helpful as I can. Um, so I wanna start with, if I can move the slide.
Let's go to the presentation. Yeah, that works. There you go.
Oh, well, I can go to presentation, I'm that smart, maybe. Oh. All right. So, um, really quickly, I know you all probably know this, but I wanna track the history of housing preservation, housing policy in Oregon, and it all starts with Goal Ten from nineteen seventy-four, which requires local governments to inventory and plan for residential use of buildable lands to, quote, encourage the availability of adequate numbers of needed housing units at price ranges and rent levels, which are commensurate with the financial capability of Oregon households. The key word there is encourage. We're not, local governments are not building units. So the idea was, we, local governments had an obligation to inventory the vacant lands they had available. Look at how many housing units they had built, look at their vacant lands, and complete a housing needs analysis, what you're now calling a housing capacity analysis. All the city had to do was zone the lands and make them available. Um, and alter the comprehensive plan and zoning scheme to address those shortfalls, and you talked a little bit about that. And that's what Goal Ten required. And so we move forward, and then we have the needed housing statutes, and I know you all know what those are. They were first adopted in nineteen eighty-one. Uh, when they were first adopted, needed housing was defined to include certain things. Needed housing was manufactured housing, needed housing was government-assisted housing, and needed housing was housing that's identified as needed on the adopted needed housing inventory. So that area where Beth identified eight acres of shortage of village, that would be needed housing land. You need that housing to fit those, that shortfall. If you have a shortfall in multifamily, you have to fill that shortfall. That is needed housing, but the rest is surplus housing. Needed housing has a special, has, carries with a special requirements, and it requires that all standards, conditions, and approval procedures for needed housing must be clear and objective. And I know you all know what clear and objective means. You probably dream about it after these, um, riveting meetings. Yeah, um, so as you know, if the standard is not clear and objective, it cannot be applied. So in nineteen eighty-one, this clear and objective concept was born, right? But because needed housing was defined as only affordable housing, manufactured housing, housing that is identified in your housing needed analysis as needed, it didn't come up that much, because it was, most of the housing happens on surplus lands. And so we didn't have a robust body of case law considering what needed housing, what clear and objective standards were. So since nineteen eighty-one, we've been eking along with, I don't know, uh, a case a year, a case every other year, considering what needed housing was. So this has evolved, what clear and objective, right? The legislature didn't define the term clear and objective, right? The legislature, they just write the terms, leave it to the lawyers to fight about. So that's what we've been fighting about since nineteen eighty-one, more or less. Couple of things you need to know about clear and objective. Um, in two thousand seventeen, the legislature, uh, uh, amended one nine seven three oh seven, the needed housing statute, and made all housing needed housing. Right? So now everything has to be clear and objective. All housing has to be reviewed through a clear and attractive, objective track. We've got cases that talk about what clear and objective means. Clear objective standards do not impose subjective value-laden analysis that are designed to balance or mitigate impacts from development. So things like compatible, things like livable, things like safety, require value-laden analysis, and those kinds of standards are not clear and objective. Clear and objective standards are things that are quantifiable. Eight feet setback. Uh, eighty percent lot coverage. Quantifiable things are clear and objective. Uh, the other thing you should know about the clear and objective obligation, it applies to procedures and to conditions of approval. There haven't been any cases to consider what a clear and objective procedure is. I think it would be very interesting to ask, you know, a type-three review, is that a clear and objective procedure? I have no idea. But, uh, that's what the statute says. Uh, the other thing you also probably know about, uh, the needed housing statutes is, in it, if you have a clear and objective track, you have a scope or review that is subject only to clear and objective standards, you can have an alternative track, a alternative discretionary track that the applicant can elect to pursue. So that's usually what we see in the plan unit development, master plan, I'm not sure what, how you all do it in Sandy, what the term you call it in Sandy, but it's a.
We got rid of it.
Yeah. Flash.
Okay, um, well, you can have a discretionary track that developers can, uh, but it has to be a choice. There has to be a clear and objective path and a discretionary path, and if you have, if you, if you have a clear objective path, you can have a discretionary path, and the law provides for that. However, even with the alternative track, the one nine seven three oh seven sub six says the city cannot discourage needed housing through unreasonable cost or delay. And your guess of what a reasonable cost and delay is, is as good as mine.
That's not clear and objective.
It's not, the, the, the state legislature doesn't have to be clear and objective. It's you that has to be clear and objective, right?
If I wanna do it, I would feel in the state legislature thinks it's not worth doing. So, I know that for sure.
Okay, so with that sort of background about the, about what the law is, which I know you all know, I'm not gonna go far into the weeds there, but I wanna share with you a couple of recent needed housing cases, because like I said, this legislation is only one side of one column law. Your definition section in your zoning code is about fifty times longer, I guarantee it. So this is all court-made law. Luba has, has, has given these terms, meaning as best they can, given the, what they see as legislative intent. So there's an old case called Home Builders Association versus Lane County, which is the, Eugene adopts a holistic zoning code with criteria for planned unit developments and all of its single-family residential zones. This is in the, uh, early two thousands. And it gets challenged by the Home Builders Association. In this opinion, is sixty pages long, and it goes through each and every criterion. And Luba weighs, yes, it's clear and objective, no, it's not, yes, it is, no, it's not. And the one I chose to, to highlight here is the requirement that stormwater runoff from a PUD will not create negative impacts on natural drainage courses such as erosion, turbidity, or sediment transport is clear and objective. Now, if you asked me, if you brought me that criteria today, I would tell you that no way that is clear and objective. That would not, that would not stand today's review by Luba, because we have evolved what it clear and objective means over time. And so I share that with you to just show that the law is, is, is being more and more strict on clear and objective all the time, being more and more stringent on looking for quantifiable, uh, outcomes. Um, Roberts versus City of Cannon Beach is, uh, uh, I'd spend forty-five minutes explaining the background of that case, but it has to do with how you measure the oceanfront setback from a haystack rock. In Cannon Beach, it varies depending on what the average setback is of your neighbors. And so the way you figure it out is you take the oceanfront setback and then you take the average from there, the average distance from that line for the neighbors. And the challenge is that that calculation of an average is not clear and objective. And what the Court of Appeals said was that, and that, that requiring taking an average is clear and objective. So I see your eyes rolling that you wouldn't have agreed, but you know, this is one of those things that like, it's like pornography. The court knows it when it sees it, you know? Um, this is, um, this is, this is a situation where the Court of Appeals this last year and Roberts said there can be some discretion. That every person knows how to calculate an average. There isn't more than one way to calculate an average, so it's clear and objective. Uh, there was a challenge to the term, the oceanfront setback line in that case. Everyone knows that there is a Oregon coordinate line that runs down the beach, and everybody knows what that is. There's another case in Eugene, uh, called Troutman, uh, versus City of Eugene, where the question was average household income. And Beth used that term a little bit, the average household income or the median income. Luba said that was clear and objective, because everybody knows what that means, you know? Maybe. Um, I wanna talk about Group V LLC versus City of Corvallis. Um, this is an older case where the city had adopted a condition to a master plan approval that said the building, and it was, the, the proposal was a master plan development with a memory care facility that was proposed to be developed at the time. And the condition said the building shall be setback no less than a hundred and thirty-five feet from the south line. And so a applicant comes ten years later to build within that hundred and thirty-five feet. The memory care facility is built. Comes to build within that hundred and thirty-five feet and argues that the condition does not apply, because it's not clear and objective, because it's not clear what the building is. Is the building the memory care, or is the building any building? And the condition that was imposed on this, this condition that I just read was imposed in two thousand and ten, before the clear and objective standards applied to all needed housing. And the court said, Luba said, it did not matter that the master plan was adopted before this needed housing was amended. And it did not matter that the previous owner accepted it. The condition. And it did not matter that the previous owner accepted it, the condition. And so we jump forward to Icon Construction LLC versus City of Oregon City, which I unfortunately was involved directly in. And uh, this is the case that was decided about eight months ago. And in Oregon City, Oregon City has a U G B expansion area that's been uh, in Park Place and Beaver Creek Concept Plans in the southeast corner of the city. And this area was planned for development in about two thousand eight and um, went through an annexation approval in two thousand seventeen. And the annexation applicant did not propose all of the development so that the city was able to evaluate what the utility demand would be from the development. You know, annexation criteria require evaluating public facility adequacy. And so when the annexate, when this applicant came in two thousand seventeen, they didn't know what they were going to build. So we couldn't evaluate the annex, that, that utility adequacy. So we imposed a condition that the applicant agreed to. In fact, it's, my recollection is the applicant proposed it. Maybe some factual dispute about that, but either way, the applicant agreed to a condition that says, when we come with development, we will go through your discretionary track review. We will go through master plan review. Right? Flash forward to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, applicant proposes a master plan. Ninety-five acres for development, like three hundred something houses, give or take. And it comes forward and the City Commission of Oregon City denies it. And uh, the developer appeals and argues that the requirement to go to master plan was not an alternative track because they didn't have a clear and objective track option. And I thought we had a pretty good argument because the applicant agreed to the track. They agreed in two thousand seventeen to go through the alternative track. I thought that seemed pretty reasonable, but not only did Luba say I was wrong, the Court of Appeals told me I was wrong, so I lost twice, you know? So I think that what I'm, the message I'm trying to, to convey is that the tide is favoring housing. It's the law, the, the courts are favoring housing and you cannot, you know, I don't, there's a lot of it I don't personally like. And I, you know, that i- i- is, is, is a struggle for many of my clients, but I am losing how needed housing cases with arguments that are, are consistent with previous precedent and I'm still losing them. And so that is, I think, a lesson for all of us local governments to, um, it's a tough pull as well. Um, oh, the final thing I want to say about I, the Icon case is, and you probably, Josh has probably talked to you about this. Um, if you're going to deny an application for needed housing, you have to give an applicant an opportunity to propose conditions to get to approval. And Oregon City didn't do that either. And that was another part of the remand in that case.
Uh, ju- just so they, that, that's the last bite of the apple thing that David Duke needs to refer to. And that is what we did in Bull Run Terrace, your Meadows or whatever it's called.
No, it's okay. I appreciate that. Okay, so then, so um, I want to talk quickly about some other housing related legislative changes that I know you all know about House Bill two thousand one and. House Bill two thousand one from two thousand nineteen and Senate Bill four fifty-eight mandates middle housing, triplex, duplex, fourplex, cottage cluster and townhouses and land divisions and single family zones. I understand you have all taken that in and embraced it. You should be congratulated for that because that's, that's a, that's a big change. And um, you know, we'll see how the, how the chips fall with that. But um, you know, congratulations for getting through. The Senate Bill eight from two thousand twenty-one and Senate, and House Bill three, three, nine, five from two thousand twenty-two uh, requires affordable housing on commercial zone lands. Senate Bill eight is sort of an early version of about the same thing uh, in, in three, three, nine, five. Uh, in other words, you have to allow affordable housing on land zone commercial or that allows religious uses without a zone change or conditional use permit. Um, and these are the provisions that allow for a cover attorney's fees for challengers of uh, housing, affordable housing project proposals. House Bill three, three, nine, five is this mega bill that got a whole bunch of legislative contact, concepts mushed together. Um, and so it's a very dense bill, but it also provide, extends the emergency shelter citing obligations. You are familiar with that. It uh, exempts them from hearing requirements. Uh, it requires allowing single room occupancies as part of your single family residential zones. You have to allow single room occupancies. And I don't know if you all separate zoning by occupancy. Oregon City doesn't, either does Sherwood. So if that won't make, make any change, it won't mean any change.
We are, we are adopting it into the code, but Josh could probably speak to that more, but. The clear and objective code on it is going to incorporate that mostly, mostly to be able to apply science standards specific to S R. So that was the, that was there.
Um, the final thing I want to mention about House Bill three, three, nine, five is remember when I said that you, when you're going to deny an application, you have to allow the applicant time to propose conditions of approval? Well, maybe back in the day when David helped you with that, you had all kinds of time to get that done. Under House Bill three, three, nine, five, you have seven days after tentative approval. So imagine negotiate, I don't know how long the list of conditions were, but uh, there aren't enough minutes in the day to uh, work with an applicant to get conditions of approval that might be satisfactory to the city and to an applicant in seven days. So um, the, how, how that, how that would, would, will play out will be an interesting um, problem for local governments. I'm sorry, what?
Calendar days.
Seven calendar days.
So you have a hundred and twenty-seven days.
Yeah, well, with um, other applications, non uh, needed housing applications, you have more time between the tentative decision and the final decision. But with needed housing, you only have seven.
But everything's needed house, so.
Yes, but it, but not, not everything's needed housing. If you're building a commercial building, it's not needed housing or a conditionally use permit for.
I mean, all residential housing.
Yeah, all housing is housing, needed housing, right? The um, final uh, piece I want to talk uh, at length about is what we can see forthcoming. And I, um, there are a couple of things. The housing production strategy, House Bill two thousand three that Kelly mentioned. As I hope you can see here, the trend is away from providing land for housing to actually building housing, right? Local governments through this housing production strategy piece that they have to do are going to have to assure housing, needed housing is constructed. And how local governments are going to do that, I'm not quite sure, but that's what House Bill two thousand three says. Local governments have to adopt a housing production strategy that shows how this housing is going to be built. One of the things that I've worked uh, personally lobbying for is the recognition of naturally occurring affordable housing. One of the things that we're, is happening with the um, additional density and authorization is that we're seeing existing housing torn down and a new, new duplex, fourplex, triplex built. And the cost of one of those units in a triplex is more than the cost of the house that was there before. And I really hope that we can recognize uh, from a policy perspective that we need to save that existing usable house because that's the affordable component piece. And if we could incentivize that somehow, if local governments could get behind incentivizing density, but keeping the house, like ADUs or additions, or there's lots of ways, I think, to realize density and still keep that one affordable unit. I know it's not easy for developers to keep, but it seemed, my hope, that that, my hope is that that's an area where local governments could make that decision and help to provide some more affordable stock. It also is the more climate friendly uh, way to approach density too. Um, so far I have spoken to D L C D, I have spoken to the governor's office, I've spoken to the Housing Production Advisory Council about this. If you look in every report on House Bill two thousand three and the housing production strategy, I think the strat, the D L C D report has about eighty pages and I think I got about ten sentences. So I'm not terribly optimistic about this idea, but again, I think there are, local governments are going to have to be creative because you don't have any money. You're not going to be able to bu- build affordable housing. You're going to have to incentivize somehow this housing production that is going to fall on the local governments to produce. As you know, the governor.
Just let you know.
You're not feeling it?
Not feeling that at all.
No, okay, all right.
How one incentivizes private industry without money?
Um, well, the, you, you all, you all know, um, you all know that there is this Housing Production Advisory Council. Nod your head if you've heard about the Housing Production Advisory Council.
I'm on it, sure.
No, uh, you're not, you're not on it. I can assure you, you are not on it. So the governor, when she took office last year, uh, set a housing goal of thirty-six thousand houses, houses annually. That's what she wants to produce. That's to make up for existing shortfall and future demand. And just so you have a rough idea uh, right now, well, before the interest rates, which, you know, uh, it was, we were producing, Oregon was producing about ten thousand units a year. So we got about a three, fourfold increase. We got to amp it up. And so in order to do this, the governor uh, called together the Housing Production Advisory Council and it is made up mostly of developers and legislators. There are no environmentalists, there are no uh, goal five activists, there are no um, you know, thousand friends representatives. These are people who are trying to identify how we are going to produce housing. And there, they have put together a laundry list of, they have put together a laundry list of all the areas where they believe that uh, government could help in this to achieve this goal. And their final report is due on January first. And so we have seen various iterations of their recommendations. Um, I can't list all of them for you now, but they run the gamut from, um. It facilitating community college to put, to, to educate more in the building trades, to edu, to provide more certificates in um, uh, building code management. They impose uh, decision timelines on building code review because that can take as long as land use has timelines, very strict timelines, a hundred twenty days and all that jazz. Building code review doesn't have that. So that's part of it to hire more building inspectors to, uh, one of the things that I think is interesting and might go to your point is uh, state funded infrastructure. If the state gave local governments money to fund the infrastructure for these larger urban growth boundary areas, these areas, for example, in Oregon City, you may have some too, where you've got to build a pump station or you've got to build a big sewer line or something. These are tremendous capital expenditures that one developer, unless they're developing all the land, won't build. And so everybody sorts of sits and waits for the first guy to come in and build it. And so one of the proposals that I think has a lot of support is this idea of state funded infrastructure projects. How that would work exactly, I don't know. Whether it be grant or whether it be bonds or exactly how it will work, I'm not sure. Um, but it, 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 it could work. What I, I've heard comments on that, if the state does fund infrastructure, then we ought to impose some affordability constraints on the developers so that the public gets some affordable housing. I mean, I think that um, Counselor Walker, you were commenting that, you know, if we need affordable and workforce housing, why are we just going to build market housing? And how are we going to turn that corner? And it's my belief if the state's going to fund infrastructure, we need to impose some affordability covenants on the housing on the other end so that the public gets that benefit back. Again, I, I fully understand that that may be wishful thinking, but that seems to me to be another way we, 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 in my mind, the need is affordable workforce housing. And, and maybe it is some market how, rate housing, but it is a lot of affordable. And I'm, I'm worried that if we change all these laws, we won't get what we changed the laws for.
Quick question on your H, H, uh, H P three, fourteen real quick. Because it says that they're basically considering getting rid of setbacks, landscaping, parking minimums, facade materials, roof forms and building, all that stuff. So two things, one is, you know, so that means they can just use, you know, four by four porch posts and T, you know, T one eleven siding and it falls apart in about, you know, five years because we've had some of that built in Sandy. And before, we had some of this code that we have now for that. And then when we talk about they're allowed to double the densities, as we were talking about earlier in the, with the duplex stuff, when you're doubling the densities, you know, I keep telling, you're getting told, oh, it can't go to twenty-eight units. Well, because there's setbacks and all this stuff. And so if you're talking about, well, you don't, you can, you can avoid those setbacks, then again, what's, first of all, how likely is that stuff? Because those are pretty important things for just livability with, you know, regardless of the income level. And then how likely is that to happen? And then how, how does that affect densities?
Okay, so let me talk quickly about House Bill three, four, one, four. House Bill three, four, one, four was introduced in the last legislative session. It almost passed, it failed by one vote. House Bill three, four, one, four has two parts. It has a housing accountability enforcement part that essentially is, uh, the mayor's comment about what happens if we don't do it. This is a whole department of D L C D coming after, coming after you.
Called the woodshed.
For, for failing to fail, for failing to achieve the housing production goals identified. So this is, so, and, and there's generally, I think, in my view of the session last year, there was general support for this idea of an enforcement arm. You know, I mean, L C D C says it'll be a friendly.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it'll be woodshed, but anyway, so, so, so there's the enforceability part. And then there is the adjustment part of House Bill three, four, one, four. And the adjustment part of House Bill three, four, one, four says that if an applicant comes to files an application and they say that they need a waiver of a standard in order to achieve density, to make their project less expensive, and in order to make it feasible, they get to waive it. That means not comply with it. The applicants.
The applicant can waive whatever he wants.
They can waive certain standards. Originally, as the bill was introduced, they could waive whatever they wanted.
Why do we have that standards?
Why?
Yeah, why would we?
Why would we what?
Have any standards?
We wouldn't.
Yeah, it kind of implies the whole nature of the term standard.
Yes, it does, it does. And, and so. Well, but that's just it, isn't it? We go through all the, local governments, through all, through all this trouble to make their standards clear and objective. Here are these clear and objective standards and then, and that developer doesn't want to comply with the height or they don't want to comply with the setbacks, so they don't want to co- comply with the massing. Well, no, so, no, so, no, so, so building code standards stay the same. Fire code standards stay the same. So the, the version of the bill that almost didn't pass, uh, people like Josh and other lawyers worked really hard with League of Oregon Cities to narrow the scope of. to narrow the scope of House Bill three, four, one, four. So that now it is a discrete list of things that can be waived. Setbacks, landscaping, parking minimums up to a certain percentage. So in the version that did not pass, they, there was a percentage. You could adjust the height one story. So you couldn't go, you know, to the, to the moon. You can only go up one story. You can uh, you know, you can adjust the lot coverages by ten percent. You can remu- adjust the landscaping obligations by twenty percent. Um, so.
So we have to go through and lower everything by ten to twenty percent?
No, you wait for an applicant to ask for an adjustment for those standards. There is, there is, there is um, according to the, to the bill, depending on which version you look at, there is very constrained rights to a challenge that, these, these adjustments. And the applicant does not have to show that the, they they don't have to bring any proof that says that the adjustment is necessary to accommodate density or to accommodate affordable housing or anything like that. They just have to say it. And if they say it, you have to give them a waiver. And you can have ten, you can have ten of these waiver in the current, in the version that went to the lit- that was, that failed, the enrolled version of the bill. You know, ten of these adjustments. It's not clear if you count ten by each standard that is adjusted or each setback. So I hope you get that this is gonna be like, you know, who's gonna win in this? Lawyers. Lawyers. And, and you know, it's, so, so I I'm telling you all this because there is no doubt in my mind and any lawyer's mind who does land use, that House Bill three, four, one, four is coming back. It will have this adjustment provision in it because the testimony that has been presented to the Housing Production Advisory Council is that the regulations are too onerous to meet and that is detra- deterring the provision of housing.
But they're not reducing the cost of the house that they're selling when they do this. So, you know, none of that is happening. And so and and of course, the committee is made mostly of developers who.
No, no, and and it doesn't, it doesn't matter if this is a second house at the beach.
Right.
It doesn't matter if it's a short-term rental.
So the disappointment there is that the League of Oregon Cities has even not.
That that's not true that they're not fighting. They are fighting tooth and nail to try to provide definition on this, to try to narrow the scope. They have worked a very, very hard to try to turn the tables on this. Um, I.
You just gotta remember with the League of Oregon Cities is that they're also up against the lobby type organization that spends tens of millions of dollars in campaign contributions and everything else. The League of Oregon Cities is not.
Well, and the other thing is you've gotta remember that the, that the, the Home Builders Association and the and the the that lobby is very powerful and that lobby, it has Republican support.
Yeah, that's supposed to be the local control guys.
Um, and so, so, you know, one of the, one, as as I have heard it, the, one of the ways Senator Kotek got the Republicans to come back into the building was a promise that she would pass three, four, one, four. So I don't know, you know, so that, 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 that makes it a very difficult situation for the League of Oregon Cities to terminate. And the third component I need to say quickly about House Bill three, four, one, four is that it allows for a one-time expansion of the urban growth boundary for certain reasons. And that's what killed three, four, one, four uh last summer was the environmental groups that Thousand Friends of Oregon that had supported three, four, one, four uh opposed it. And that brought some Democrats to also oppose it and that was its death now.
In truth, if you wanna end it again, those are the groups to start hanging out with.
Um.
Well, there's also, I mean, you know, the biggest arguments we have in our neighborhoods is parking wars, right? Chief, park, you know, people complaining about, you know, they're parking in my spot, whatever. And so, you know, when people hear that the developer's gonna be able to be building all this development and not have to provide parking for it, that's just a recipe, you know, that's right there. We get you a lot of folks writing letters and fighting this because you just, you know.
I'm liking our moratorium. Can I ask a question over?
Please.
A little bit off. With all of this stuff kind of being thrown at it, and I know it's not super popular, has there been any legislation proposed about short-term rentals and, you know, providing that as a relief to the market as well?
You mean constraining short-term rentals? No, no. Um, no, I uh was at a lunch event with one of the chairs of the Housing Production Advisory Council and we asked the question about what about exempting short-term rentals and second how homeowners from the uh variance piece of three, four, one, four? And the response was it's less than one percent of the overall housing stock, so it's not a problem. I mean.
Unless you live in Lincoln City or somewhere.
The, I I think that the uh, you know, I think that the takeaway is from, from my perspective is this is difficult and it is frustrating and I, what I've told um the city council of Sherwood, the city council of Oregon City, the city council of Cannon Beach, it's that we have to do what we can with this and um and uh make the best of it by leveraging what is important about our cities. And to the extent we have any control, we have to exercise it to the best we can for our communities because nobody else is speaking from the voice of our, of what makes our towns unique. Whether it's village, whether it's Orenco Station, whether it's, you know, whatever it is that is speaks to your community. We have to try to retain that by working hard with Kelly and the planning staff to, to do that. Because we stand right now on the precipice of jumping in with a whole bunch of new housing policies and it's laying those ground wheels that are gonna set the tenor for the next fifty years. And so, let's, let's keep an open mind. And my view is let's plan as best we can now. Let's be very deliberate about our housing needs analysis and the dot data that went into it and our housing production strategies and what, you know, your comprehensive plan. What is it about your community that you have to save and get Kelly and his team working on those clear and objective standards to implement those now? Because it takes a ton of time and it takes a ton of nuance. And, you know, refine, 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 because you are far better spending your money at the forefront than on me in litigation twenty years from now. So I um would be happy to answer any questions. I'd be happy to, you know, commiserate with you that, you know, we really should throw in the towel and call it Texas in a day, you know, like, you know, I I, I wish I had more optimistic news. But it is what it is.
I'm just thinking of that city of the future, you know, and I'm thinking of the movie Ready Player One and that city he was living in. Remember that with just the stacked containers?
It's like Oklahoma City or Tulsa or something like that.
Stacked containers.
I was convinced during COVID this where we were going.
So. Could we, for example, increase our setbacks by ten percent or whatever it is?
That's what I said. Now, so they can.
Yeah, and then, yeah, can we do that?
Um.
Can we increase our minimum lot size?
It's the equivalent of having a really broad initial use.
Doesn't it go to that rule? It can't be overly burdensome enough.
Yeah, I think that would be over, I think it would be overly burdensome and increase cost.
Now, they, to to your question earlier, councillor Hopkinson, it's similar to the duplex provision. You don't wanna change the code provisions down anticipating the adjustments because then they can adjust even farther down. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we need to, we still need to do the, we need to make it detached.
Oh, are SDCs wavable?
No.
Yay. It's not through that permission.
Not for that permission.
Related to that, though, that was, which I was also thinking, we guys talked about that, you know, increasing all this density. What, what happens is that we, you know, design our infrastructure based on this many people. And now you're able to get this many people there and the infrastructure that we built with all the subdivisions we've had in the last twenty years were not developed to accommodate that. So not only do we already have a problem, because, you know, things are still, you know, we have the moratorium going on, but with this increased density, the stuff we've built and the stuff that's, you know, supposed to get built, isn't built to the capacity, the densities that you're talking about. So how do you deal with that? And is that a, is that a rationale for tamping it down a little?
Um, well, so as part of your middle housing uh code amendments, you had to look at your adequacy of your infrastructure. Or you, or you have code provisions that say, if I'm coming with a fourplex where a single-family house was proposed, the city could deny it if the sewer line isn't big enough to accommodate four houses rather than one. So I don't know which way you all went with your middle housing accommodation, but that, that is, you should have, I believe, built into your code a provision that would allow you to deny a middle housing project if it didn't have adequate infrastructure. But you are right, the infrastructure costs go up when you've got more units to serve. And that doesn't help the affordability problem.
But this is why you also do your comprehensive plans and you stack them on top of each other, using those algorithms that we saw with the ACDA. Because we start to project what the housing needs are, what it looks like, and try to infer what those costs will be for infrastructure and needs will be for infrastructure, so that we can, you know, prepare for them in the future.
That only works over, it's always rolling over each other. But that only works if you use accurate data and we're not even, we're using historical data that's not even based on the double-edged locks.
It's like a double-edged sword though, right? So you can, you can say, this is how many units will be developed and therefore here's the SDCs that would be collected. And this is how much infrastructure we need to build. And yeah, if you have way more units built, maybe your infrastructure's not meeting that demand. But you've also collected way more SDCs than you projected you would need with that amount of land being constructed. So it's kind of a double-edged sword in my opinion.
Although the downside is where you just, on these last two slides, you see the code is changing annually and increasing annually. So we can't even keep up with what they're.
But that's.
As fast as they're.
That's, you know, climate-friendly equitable communities, you know, all of that. That's another big bite of rulemaking that all local governments are gonna have to deal with with respect to parking and with respect to climate-friendly zones. I mean, there, you're absolutely right, the legislation is coming down faster than local governments can keep up. And, you know, again, that will only serve lawyers.
And we, and we, we got, we actually meet most of the climate-friendly parking and transportation rules already with the waivers we did in our downtown. The reductions we did elsewhere, the bike parking that we already have. And we got very lucky that we're not inside metros, so the majority of those climate-friendly rules don't apply to us. I would anticipate there'll be future legislation which expands outside those metro areas. So I wouldn't think it'll be too long before it does apply to us.
Well, thank you. Uh, a lot of information tonight, some we can do something about, a lot we can't. But we're more informed.
And I am gonna say, I'm gonna make developers name it.
Huh?
I'm gonna make them name it.
Yeah, no kidding.
Well, I I would hope, I I'll just say one last thing. I would hope, Car- Carrie, what I would like help from you doing is, you know, what I think we all want is a balance. That, that's what I was gonna ask is, you know, we have a huge, you know, forty, fifty percent of our town is already zoned for high or medium density for that middle housing. So I feel like, you know, we're already doing it. And yet, you know, now it's gotta happen on all, all of our areas. And so, you know, we're just gonna get with it, even though we're meeting the standard. So that's what's frustrating for me. And I come off as being, you know, oh, I just, you know, single family and all that. No, I want the balance. We have the balance. And so my question is, how can we legally change our code language to maintain that balance? Cause we're get, we're losing it over here in the lower density stuff. So how do we, how can we?
Well, I think the legislature would say they don't want you to have a balance. It's housing over all of us now. And that's what we're doing and.
But that's not what the public wants. And that's, you know, the people moving to Sandy don't want, you know, high density everywhere. So that's what, that's the public argument.
Kind of hard part is, is the public kind of doesn't know what they want. It's like, they say, you do the polling statewide, they want more housing, but they don't want housing where they live. And that's.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Well, and.
That's what they're looking at. We're looking at livability and this two don't mix. I think we should focus a little bit on the moratorium needs that might help us out with some of our density adjustment.
Well, certainly gives us the most control.
It gives us a little window. Other communities don't have, so that's, that's kind of a plus.
Well, and I think that many communities are looking for opportunities to control their futures. And I would encourage you to, you know, meet with other cities. You all, you probably meet with planners regularly to identify strategies of where there, there may be some room. And I'm, I'm, there's not gonna be a lot, but.
The, the planning director meetings for Quackamas County, which I do attend quarterly, it's a lot of grumbling about all these issues that basically our ability to do planning at the local level is being taken away slowly, well, not quickly.
Well, and.
But one thing I was gonna ask Carrie though is like, I, I think to your point, councillor Walker, I think, you know, if you do change the code, I believe that's the intention of House Bill three, four, one, four. Is to basically say, yeah, okay, go ahead, local government, change your code. But then the developer can just come in and do ten adjustments to it.
Right.
It's the Trump, it's like the Trump part. It's like, okay, fine. We call it, it's like calling our bluff kind of in a way.
Well, I mean, what happens if, if every city in the state of Oregon comes together and pushes back?
I would, I.
But you're not gonna get that unfortunately.
I, I think that, I think that.
I use the word all, but what if you got, you know, a large majority?
That, there were, there were consortiums of mayors who testified in oppositions. There were every environmental group except for Thousand Friends of Oregon, uh, 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 you know, testified in opposition. Um, you know, it, I, I just, I, I believe that this is a way that, that the housing need is real. I, I have no doubt that we need thirty-six thousand units. I, you know, I don't dispute that number. That, the, how, we are short of units, no question. Whether or not you can build thirty-six thousand units and per, and and that result in a trickle down to provide workforce and affordable, I don't think will happen.
So why, I agree. In a free market, why do you think we need thirty-six thousand units? Given that we don't have that many in process, being looked at, being considered? I mean, there's nothing keeping us from building thirty-six thousand units today as a state.
Well, there has been.
There's problems, but as you saw from our presentation, there's a ton of land where nothing is happening. So the question is why?
If the market hasn't buried it.
The market doesn't bear it. So even if you look at the building cost to build this, even if the land, if we were to eliminate everything, we are still gonna build unaffordable housing.
Mm-hmm, that's your point.
Right. As you pointed out with your, turn down your old one and replace it with new ones that per square foot are now more expensive. This is impossible. We can eliminate everything and not.
Yeah.
Not move this needle one step.
But that's why, that's why this is so frustrating. Because what will happen with the interest rates so high is that there won't be new housing built and we'll take away these regulations and they'll come back and say, see, we done taken away enough regulations. Now you get twenty adjustments. Now you get fifty adjustments.
That's exactly right.
And, and it is polit- I, but my personal belief is that it is politically expedient to put the turd in the local government's pocket.
For sure.
Because the public doesn't know about this. They're not gonna know about this until they see the development go up higher than they expected or with T one siding or without the setbacks. And they come into, to Kelly and like, what the hell? What's going on? How can you let this happen? And you all are gonna say it's, we, it's the state and, you know, the constituents are not gonna understand that.
Nowhere to go to get recourse.
So, and, and it doesn't ta- cost money to force local governments to waive standards the way it costs to build infrastructure. So, um, you know, I. I, I don't have to.
We won't need terminals here, that's for sure, because they'll be rotating us in and out so fast.
Yeah, right, no kidding. Alright.
Well, I don't, yeah, so.
Well, appreciate, I, I appreciate everybody's time tonight.
I, I hope that if you all are interested in, you know, the next, the son of House Bill thirty-one, forty-one and getting involved. I, I hope that if you all are interested in, you know, the next, the son of House Bill thirty one, forty one and getting involved. We are always looking for testimony and the League of Oregon Cities got people and, you know, there's. I, I'm working with the historic preservation folks to try to keep our historic resources alive and.
But that's where they have us. Is if we go back and push too hard, we have money things that we need for the infrastructure and pay for housing that they won't award to us.
Do you think it's? More valuable to spend time. Planning for what is next in the pipeline and formulating an argument against that sooner rather than later. Or focusing our time on what's in front of us that is likely gonna pass anyways, because my concern is then the SDC repeal. Or the, you can't charge to SDCs when they convert it to a duplex any longer. And so should we be investing more time? On the forefront of those future things to ensure that we don't lose all funding financially.
I believe you're, the former is right.
That's right.
And I think that is a real one coming down. I've been told by the state. There's been talk about that.
You can't collect the money that you need and.
Re-look at ours. I mean, you pledge, you can't collect twice, only once.
But I mean, if it's two, two housing units getting built, we can.
You know, I'm not, I'm not saying that's. Existing legislation I've just heard from different people that work for the state of Oregon.
Yeah, the SDC waiver is a big incentive to get outcomes, they think. Another, another thing that doesn't cost state money. Yes, a lot of.
And in turn, all of our ratepayers.
Us, the city, it's the residents that pay.
All right. All right. That's our work session.
Goodness, we do have a ladder council meeting agenda, but let's go ahead and close out our work session and plan on convening our council meeting here at. Meeting or.
Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
And I do, for the record, those comments were in jest. Moving ahead. I'm gonna skip the review. Jeff, will you please follow the roll?
It's Councilman Maiten.
Present.
Councilman Smallwood. Councilman Sheldon.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Councilman Exner.
There.
Councilman Hockenson.
Here.
Mayor Pulling.
Here. Any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Jeff, has anybody submitted anything for a public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, moving ahead, no response to previous weeks. We got the consent agenda, has our city council meeting minutes for November twentieth. In our library advisory board appointments. Uh, unless there's discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
There's a motion by Councilor Exner, a second by Councilor Hockenson, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries, just wanna take a second and. Uh, thank a couple folks that are joining onto our library board.
Yes.
And, um, wonderful time interviewing some of those folks and I think all three will be very good. Uh, moving ahead to new business, we have a contract approval for the design for Portland to Sandy Water Filtration Plant Transmission System. Jenny, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we're here tonight to ask you to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with consort engineers. The purpose of this contract is to provide engineering design services to construct a new pump station and transmission pipeline. To convey filtered treated water from the Bull Run Watershed Portland Filtration Plant to the city of Sandy. Sandy has used the Bull Run water source, um, since twenty thirteen. And the city is unable to meet all their water demands with our Alder Creek and Brownell sources. In addition, this pipeline connection will provide us access to the Columbia Wellfield groundwater source, which will be able to be used in times of drought or wildfire. Um, and as the council is aware, um, this is part of our approved water system master plan. And we have a bilateral compliance agreement to complete this by September twenty seven. Um, we went through qualifications based selection, received three proposals and consort was. We, we went through interviews, they were the top recommended firm, well versed in the area, superb reviews. The projects identified in the capital budget and it's funded through the Business Oregon Special Public Works Fund loan at a below market interest rate of one point five four percent. And repayment will be made from water rate revenues and is included in the water rate model. I did wanna give you a couple more details. This is, this contract is for three point six million dollars. We're still working through details of what we'll do for disinfection. So what we are planning is to do a preliminary authorization for one point eight million for the design. And we have about half of it held in reserve in case the disinfection, the removal of the deionification system doesn't work. And we have to put in an alternative system. If it does work, my hope is we won't have to come back with, to you for more construction, but this is within the budget and gives us flexibility. Moving forward. And it's our recommendation to authorize the city manager execute the contract with consort for three, three million, six hundred and two thousand, one hundred and sixty nine dollars. And, um, to add to this, Portland did receive land use approval from London County last week. We understand this will likely be appealed, however legally they do have the right. You know, once they work through some of the details to move forward with construction.
All right, unless there's questions for Jenny or discussion, I'll entertain a motion, but approve the contract.
WTF is? That's the wet water treatment facility?
Yes, I think so.
Where's the focus? I moved to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with consort, consort engineers for engineering design services. For the Portland to Sandy Water Filtration Plant Transmission System in, in amount not to exceed three million, six hundred and two thousand, one hundred and sixty nine dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Motion by Councilor Sheldon, a second by Councilor Walker, all those in favor signify by say aye. Opposed nays, motion carries. All right, moving ahead, thank you Jenny, appreciate it. Moving ahead, resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty five for SDC charges for commercial to residential use conversions for House Bill twenty nine eighty four.
Thank you, Mayor. So let's go back in time about fifteen minutes to a not so pleasant conversation we were having about the state getting involved in land use. And other restrictions that they may or may not be placing on local governments. Uh, House Bill twenty nine eighty four was passed earlier this year and goes into effect January first, twenty twenty four. Um, it allows the conversion. It allows the conversion of, uh, commercial buildings to residential uses. And our existing code as written, chapter fifteen allows for us to charge SDCs on those conversions. But part of what, uh, House Bill twenty nine eighty four required that policy to be sort of. Formally adopted or, or ensure that it was in place before December thirty first to continue to charge SDCs on those conversions. We felt like we were probably in a good place with what we had in the code, but to be extremely, um. Cautious and sure that we're not going to misstep or lose a battle or have anyone question it, bring forward a resolution to get councils. Um, adoption on allowing SDCs to be charged essentially for commercial residential uses. That's it in a nutshell.
Thank you. Awesome. Any questions or emotions to adopt? Yeah, Carl.
Uh, two things. One is, is I talked to two commercial owners and they're very much in favor of this. This sounds like a lot of good common sense. When people actually own buildings, that'll be in that, uh, arena and. Few as is. I did, I was gonna make the motion.
I have another question. Um, so are they able to, um, build on, you know, like, if they had a commercial building downstairs, then they wanted to build three or four stories above it. Is that, is that considered a conversion or, or not?
That's a great.
That's not a conversion, okay. And then the second question, or the second comment I would add is that. It's probably likely that some of these buildings, you will not have good records for what SDCs were paid for. Before about maybe nineteen ninety or eighty six.
Are you insinuating that we don't have all of our?
So that, yeah, it is, you know.
Yeah, there, there may be some, you know, records that we don't have for some of those older buildings.
And the other thing I clarified was that, you know, like if they paid SDCs on nineteen ninety, you know, say two thousand, your two thousand rates. And then now I'm sure it's much more. And so they'll get hundred percent for the, whatever they paid in two thousand, but. You know.
That's my understanding.
Difference is gonna be the twenty twenty three, so, okay. And also I had, if you guys heard, saw your email, I asked a question to make sure that it also applies to our transportation and our parks and next stuff, so it does.
All right, motion. I move to adopt resolution twenty thirty, twenty twenty three dash thirty five. Resolution opting system development charge calculations, connection commercial to residential conversions as required by.
Or second. Second, there's a motion by Councilor Exner, a second by Councilor Sheldon, all those in favor signify by say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. All right, thank you, everybody. Tyler, report for the city manager.
I had a lot of notes. Did not take too much of your evening. One of the things that, uh, the council had asked about several meetings ago was in relation to a comprehensive look. Um, at all of our SDCs and what that translated to, to an average building permit. Just as a reminder, we finished updating our transportation system plan earlier this year. Uh, FCS group who's done all of our rate models and, and master plan sort of financial analysis. Is working on an update to our transportation SDC right now. And so once we have that update, um, in draft form, we'll bring back that update with the other SDCs. To have that comprehensive look of what the change in that SDC actually does to a building permit cost. Uh, we'll also incorporate the ENRC, the Engineering News Record, um, basically the, the construction CPI. Um, that we use as our metric to increase all the other SDCs at the same time. So we'll bring that back mid-spring or hopefully at July first effective date. Um, that will also get all of our fees and charges on the same calendar year schedule, so we won't be having November, December SDC updates. And then May, June conversations about rates, and let's get everything on that, uh, June adoption, July effective date. Um, for all the, all the charges in the schedule. Um, you may have heard recently too in the news about some concerns with recreational immunity and what that means with, um. Damages or injuries that occur on trails. We've had some, uh, conversations with CIS who, as our insurance agent, obviously took a very conservative approach. Which is that you should just essentially close your trails, right? I mean, there's more to it than that, but that's been the, the. The most prudent way to ensure that you don't have any liabilities to not have them.
That's who, that's how they advise all of their. Yeah, Oregon insurance, right?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Right. So obviously we're not taking the approach of closing all of our trails. That's one of the pride and joys of, of being in Sandy and, and having the. Um, incredible trail network that we have here. So, uh, you know, the, the main point that I'm trying to make right now is that we're aware of that, um. Uh, case, we talked to BEH, Rochelle's working with ORPA and getting other, um, communities sort of perspective on what they're doing. And how we can manage to limit our liability going forward. So we are actively working on that, um, right now.
Not to get into the legalities, but just a reminder, I don't think this individual is on a trail. They were on an access point to a trail. Yes, there's a difference. There's still immunity on that trail, but this individual was accessing.
It was a trail to the beach.
Right.
So, so they deemed that they were not recreating.
They were. Right, they were transferring.
They were going to recreate when they got to the beach.
Yes.
With their dog and their friend.
Right, no, I understand that.
It's a scary.
It's unbelievable. I agree, I'm just.
I mean, I've heard of.
I'm living in nuance over here.
Heard of situations too about, you know, utilizing a parking lot for a festival and now where you're using. The, the intended use of that parking lot is for parking, right? But now you're using it for different use instead of where it's the liability, start or end situations like that. So more to come on that, but I just, you all know it's on our radars and we're, we're working on limiting our liability and doing whatever we need to do to make sure that we can keep our trails open.
Tyler, are they also working on that at the state level to amend the recreation immunity?
Don't know, do you have any?
Because including a couple words in that and in the OARs and all that.
That's what Rochelle said.
Yeah.
I, I am almost certain that that, well, it's at least gonna be proposed.
Yeah.
They fixed it last time this happened, two years back, legislature did. It's a lot of good policy reasons to support recreational immunity.
Yeah.
The most basic one.
Yeah.
Um, some positive news, so for many years when we got heavy rain events like we did this weekend. The ways our plant flows were exceedingly high. I got an update from Jenny that, um. The plan was at five point five yesterday and down to three point four today. Some of those high rain events we had in the past were closer to ten or a little over ten. So, uh, significant improvement with the millions and millions of dollars we've spent in our, uh. In our collection system and in our various basins, so. I'd like to highlight that not all of that money was spent just because we needed to comply with the consent decree. It, there's like a tangible benefit to all of that work. I'm not. Was there a Facebook quote that said that?
We're just paying off the deed, do it all of our expense.
Oh. Yeah.
That might be something nice just to put on the before and after.
Yeah.
On Facebook.
Absolutely. Uh, we also had a question a couple meetings ago, if there would be a menorah lighting this year and we had not heard. There is, yep. On December twelfth. It's not a official city event.
They do not want it to be.
To be a city event, correct. I don't know if we require a permit or not.
If they wanted to reserve the plaza, they would, they just go to development services. I can check on that.
It is at the plaza. Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're not reserving it, they don't have to do anything.
They just wanna make sure that. No troubles. I don't wanna be favorites when we tell somebody else.
Yeah, that's a hundred percent.
Right, a hundred percent.
And then last but not least, um, Sarah retreat this Saturday, ten AM. See y'all there.
What do we need to correct for that?
So we will, we'll have a sat lunch provided, um, coffee and, well, I. Giving you the whole spiel, sat lunch provided, coffee and some treats for earlier in the day. Um, we will put out an agenda. Um, there will not be a large packet of information. I really wanna use this as a time to talk about urban renewal, talk about some of the projects that we have in the pipeline, talk about other.
Really nice if counselors had a feel for that, that meeting we had on the capacity of our urban renewal, right? Like our bonding capacity and what that means for that budget. And had a good feel for obviously that rec center, kind of what the, you know, the small, medium and large numbers vaguely were. But that's, that, that's kind of what we want you to know.
And I think to that point, Mayor, less about the specific design of the building and more about the cost. We can flesh out floor plans, we can flesh out siding material. We're really trying to get down to the comfort level of the expenditures related to our urban renewal district.
I can only speak for myself personally, if you want me to come invested in that meeting with an objective mind on alternatives. I need to have some thought about those alternatives before I get there. If you just come to me on Saturday and say, these are three alternatives we looked at, help me decide versus good, better or best building design, I'm gonna be like.
No, no, we're not gonna make us decide now.
No, I know, but I mean, it's, it's kind of hard to give an opinion when you, you got the shock and all of a new alternative.
So sooner is better, sooner is better. On the agenda.
Okay.
Even if it's just a bullet of a location, you know, there's, you get some thought around it.
Absolutely, yeah.
To have the questions available to ask.
Agenda should go out Wednesday evening. Um, so that'll give you a couple days to go over it. Uh, and the meeting will be held at the, I don't know what the official name is, Mayor, the, the theater next to Clackamas County Bank. It's in their theater room.
Oh, we're doing that?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Yep, yeah, so I, I don't know the title of that.
You had, there was some other option of getting more money than what you kind of lied down before.
You mean like refinancing the existing?
There was some, you know, it was like ten, ten or something million, but it was an option to get more or something. I didn't quite understand what that was. And that wasn't in the paperwork, right?
That was not, that was a, if, if, in that specific context, if the desire of the board was adding a third floor and going after this. Much larger scale project, um, we could spend some.
More side words around what that is and what it means and how much it is.
Yeah, yeah, there's not, has not been a full analysis of that, because it would likely mean some restrictions elsewhere in the budget, likely general fund. Um, but we can spend a little bit of time talking about other funding sources, although. Urban Board wouldn't have any discretion over executing those financial decisions.
Will Phil be invited to this?
Phil and Chris have both been invited. I don't know if they have responded as. Phil and Chris have both been invited. I don't know if they have responded as in attendance.
Still a member or not a member?
He is, he is. Well, he is.
It's kind of an odd spot if you ask me.
Well, it is and it isn't, right? Like because I agree it is, but, 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 but that board gets to send a representative to represent them on our urban regional board, right? And so who are we to tell that board who should represent them on there? We certainly, if we were sending a representative, we wouldn't want them telling us.
Let me rephrase my question.
Okay.
Has the new fire board appointed Phil?
There you go. Yeah, we, we have no update on a new appointment.
So he may, he may or may not be officially appointed.
True. Which to be fair, I'm not sure if the old fire board specifically appointed Phil or if Phil was just the de facto person that showed up. So.
I'm just trying to lay the groundwork.
Yeah, yeah.
No, and this is a work session. Said that we were gonna talk about.
We did.
What was going to be on that board.
Yes, we have.
That board has decided not to decide until Phil has retired. That's what they decided not to do.
Okay.
So.
Phil will probably fill that. So, so this is a work session. We're not voting on anything.
But Tyler, can you, in your capacity, kind of reach out to yeah, there's a new chief designate or whatever the situation is over there, have this kind of conversation, start figuring out a plan?
Yep.
Even if that means we send like Carl to their board meeting and kind of say, hey, we'd really like y'all to appoint somebody. You don't care who it is, appoint someone, whatever it is. Well, you already. Okay, we'll push them hard, Carl.
And Councilor Exer, if you.
You gotta give me some authority.
If you need me to attend a fireboard meeting to help facilitate that conversation too, I'm happy to to attend virtually or in person or hang along, however they meet these days. So.
We got a really cool system for virtual. I think it's a beaver. I think that's what they call it.
No, it's an owl.
Maybe it's a skunk. I don't know.
Owl. Literally, that's what it's called.
It turns on people.
Looks like an owl.
That's it.
Is it? You're not gonna update council on our library meeting?
Oh, I sent a brief update in the weekend update. But a, a more detailed update. The mayor and I, along with some other Sandy and Hoodland library representatives, met with the county last week to talk about funding Hoodland's rent. Every other county in Clack, every other library in Clackamas County has a permanent home. Hoodland's the only library that is in a rented space. Rent is paid for out of the operations budget. There's been long, long lasting concerns over one, should the library district revenue be paying for any sort of capital to other libraries? But two, the negative impact that not having a permanent home and utilizing operating revenues to pay an ongoing rent expense decreases the actual revenue or funds available for ongoing library programs, materials, staff, et cetera. So we came with a pretty reasonable ask of cover the rent for six years, get us through three biennium. Hopefully by that time the county can facilitate a larger conversation with what sort of permanent facility would be built up the mountain. Whether that's a combined facility for senior services and library services or a new like community recreation hall, whatever, right? We don't have a specific ask in that respect. We were trying to get some funding on the table now to either increase hours or purchase more materials and offset that rent expense from this point forward six years. There was some confusion during the meeting about what the actual request was and why we had been called to Clackamas County's offices to have the meeting. After quite a while, we got through that and we're actually able to finish the meeting in about twenty minutes in lieu of the forty minutes that we spent talking about things that weren't relevant. End of the day though, there is support. There is a, a proposal from staff on the table to fund nearly all of our ask, potentially all of our ask. There's some discrepancy, I think, between whether it's a hundred and forty thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand. So we're gonna work through that. Negligible difference. And that will go before the county commissioners sometime soon. I haven't seen a draft of the IGA yet. But we are feeling pretty positive and hopeful that we'll get that to go through. We'll have additional funding for Hoodland and then yeah, they will, they will not be paying their rent out of their operating budget and instead we'll be able to use those funds about twenty-five thousand dollars a year for additional operating hours or materials, which is huge for that community.
Through the library took half my life last week.
There was a lot of library discussion last week.
All right, cool.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, cool. First, I think some of the conversations today just strikes home my position, longstanding position is to build up the best case for solid, robust SDCs across the board and not to drag our feet in raising them just because we have no idea what the future is going to be and anything we don't collect in an SDC gets paid for by the residents. In my mind, in a way that's disproportionately unfair towards residents versus newcomers. So just, that was just my comment. The other is I wanted to explain my HCA comment. Very, very disappointed with this vendor. And talking with a couple of the planning commission members, seems like there's general consensus. They're not really happy with this vendor as well. I feel like they just get snowed and some push from slide to slide and data point to data point. This is a program they brought to us and we're just here to listen and sign and then they move on to the next client. And maybe that's just how rigorous the state has set it up to be, that we've created this little industry that does no value added and produces big reports that look almost the same from city to city. What I, what I, my point that I was trying to make is to, to her and what I've asked staff for is in the SDCs, there's a methodology that we adopt before we get into the discussions. The methodology says, here's all the factors that we're going to consider. Here's how the formulas work. Here's the ranges that you can adjust up or down to come up with, you know, your number, but it's, it all flows back to the formulas that you adopted. And here we just have numbers and the numbers are fully tied to the agenda. And what I don't know is are, is there a range to any of these numbers that is allowable under the state harbor or under the state rules? Or is it truly as, as limiting as what is presented? And I just don't know. It's very unclear from the presentation. I hate it when people just throw numbers at you like it's the fact when in reality it's one data point of a hundred, this representative of almost nothing.
You can make numbers look however you want.
You can. And, and I hate it when people try to do that without telling me to do that. So anyway, I got real irritated with that. I apologize. Lights were fantastic. I just wanted to be, because at first I get to say first. The park looks wonderful. I passed on to staff. My wife was approached by a couple of people who were very much interested in they actively involved in the committee next year. They do lights over near where our former councilman's neighborhood is. Really cool shiny things and.
Well, what I'd like to see them do at this committee is do a neighborhood committee and really get that neighborhood to the next level and play into what they're doing.
But I, these guys are probably already there.
Yeah.
Probably more than agree.
Yeah.
Into do that and not just one or. So I think, I think there's a real opportunity for us to make this stable down the road by creating such a committee where we've got manpower, brain power and go after more. I love that. We had, there were a few sponsored things out there. I think that was great. So anyway, that's wonderful. I just wanted to put in a plug. Santa will be coming on a few nights here and there. I think tomorrow he whether committing the good build guy might show up. So and then one more, but I can't remember what it was. Must not matter. I have remote writing.
Here for the mayor is to go first so that Don doesn't steal. Carl.
Yeah, I just wanted to do the lights. I was able to make it to the first night and what a wonderful thing. And plus downtown looks so nice. I'm just really pleased with all the things that seem to be happening. The only real complaint that I think I have there is, is I think everybody recognizes that this puppy is gonna be a grantion, a lot of work for our recreation people as it moves. We gotta figure out what that's gonna end up being in the long term. I know that already they're feeling that itch of being overwhelmed. I met with the counselor Smallwood. I won't take too much here.
No, you're fine.
With the chainsaw carving folks and they're very excited about expanding that, looking at probably the first part of June next year instead of the fall where all the fire problems could be part of the problem and had the fire happen. So a number of the fire folks weren't able to be there because they were defending our watershed. So hoping that the springtime would be a better time for it. Yeah, he, he's a ball fire. Doing the whole thing. I saw, I was amazed. My jaw dropped clear to the floor and everything. I saw Bogot and City of Sandy working on the highway. I was just impressed completely.
Together?
Together, working on cleaning up all the leaves and everything, gutters and such. I don't know how you did that, but I'm impressed.
I'm gonna take all the credit.
Right, okay. First time. And that's, that's it.
We, as somebody a little too early in the meeting, that we did bring in three board, library board members, Liz Lopez, Aquato and Selena Horstfall are both new members. And I believe at least one or both of those people speak Spanish. So that's a neat benefit that we have. And then Lynn Pollard has been on our board already and we reappointed her. So we're really happy to have them. I'm glad that y'all were able to get, work with the county and get the operation costs for the rent covered. That's really gonna help their ability to have a little bit more flexibility for their operations. Like you said, either, you know, more programs or more purchases of materials. And like I said, the tree lighting was great. I got there a couple of minutes late and somebody had already left.
So did the mayor.
There is a game going on.
It was really. So, but I was just impressed with how many people were there despite the rain and it was a really neat thing. And then also I did the next night pet picks with the Grinch here program with the Kiwanis. We did the hot chocolates and free cookies and all that. And that was, I, you know, a huge success. We, the rain let it stay off for the whole time pretty much. And a lot of folks really appreciating that and the lights looked fantastic. So really happy about that. I, I kind of echo the, the concerns about that presentation we had about, you know, for me and I, I get that there's a, you know, menu that they use and they just roll through the whole process. But what was important for me to understand as the one who kind of was asking that we get this done is, you know, how many acres of SFR R1, R2 or et cetera do we have already right now? Zone, both zone versus what it actually got developed at? And then what is the future demand for these? And I, I just wanna be able to tell that story that we already have, you know, I wanna say at least forty to fifty percent, especially if you're considering, you know, that we all need to allow commercial to have residential high, high density too. You know, it's probably over fifty percent of our land is already zoned for meeting this high density crunch. And so we all wanna have a balance. So what, you know, we, we need to be able to tell that story about the need to have things on the lower side of that and how that's getting kind of taken up. And that means a loss of livability in Sandy because, because some folks want, you know, some larger lots. We don't want everything out there to be teeny tiny lots. That's not why everybody moved to Sandy. So and I just didn't get the feeling that they understood that that's kind of where we're coming from. So, yeah. But I look forward to seeing, you know, where this goes from here and I appreciate hearing about the recreation immunity. I kind of did a deep dive on all the case studies that they were referencing and some, some of the stuff in original articles and and yeah, I'm excited to see that get fixed either through some temporary signing for now, but then longer term in changing some of the language that, you know, basically, you know, that defines recreation is just walking on the trail. If you're walking on the trail with, you know, with or without your dog, you're, you know, including the word walking or biking or, you know, whatever as part of the act. So anyway.
All right. So I just, I kind of wanna emphasize what Don said about the SDCs. And do I understand that's correct about do I hear you say we're gonna have that conversation in June? Is that one year?
We will bring it back for adoption in June for July effective date. I think we'll have like a work session around it. Early spring, maybe late March, early April.
So the winter fest, I'm gonna echo it dude, because I thought it was that good. The winter festival looks really good down there. I really enjoyed the
The weather's key, right?
Yeah, it really was. Through town also looks really good. The one thing I really like, you know, everyone else kind of went off the coast, but the one thing I really like is the little Sandy sign.
Yeah, that's right.
Sandy lovely.
Yeah, I like that. So I think that's a, you know, where I grew up on the coast, you go to Moreton, they got whole ships and stuff. It's just kind of iconic, right? For that. And so that's kind of that for here. So I think that's super neat. Yeah, so in regards to the, this upcoming retreat, I, I realize, I, I understand what Chris is saying and I, I think that's to have a plan or just the ideas of what, what the, you know, other expenditures are or whatever else out there. But the one thing that I just, I'm just gonna be upfront in here and just say that I have really trouble wrapping my running around is what are we gonna use? What is the plan? Again, I, I don't think it's my job to come up with a plan for the, the rec center, right? It's kind of authorized the money in that. So I kind of wanna hear what staff's plan is. What are we gonna do with all these, these rooms? You know, are, are you gonna have, is that, is that the plan to move city all over there? And then this become one? That's a lot of money. And before, I'm just gonna be upfront, before I really even start kind of going down there, I, I really wanted to know what what the goals are behind this building and, and that money. So that, that's, that's the standpoint where I'm coming from. I decided to throw it out there. So, but there's plenty of time to think about that. And then the last thing is I saw Stan finally has his ice skating rink over at my park. It just needs to be frozen. So I just thought I'd point that out. It might be a little brown. It's, it's a big lake down the grassy area.
A lot of rain.
Yeah. So I don't need to repeat anything that anybody else has said, but I did attend the Tupper Park fundraiser fundraiser at Just Room last Thursday. Did not see any of them there.
Did you see them do a movie night?
Yeah, they're doing movie nights. So I, I just want I know we're using social media to get that information out. It wasn't, it was okay attended. I think it could have been better attended. So I don't know. Maybe we need to come up with some creative ways to get that information out to more than just people who are following the city of Sandy on social media. And I know it went on the community pages and I know several staff shared it on their pages. I saw it, but just maybe some creative ways that you can just get those out. Things like that, not just those events. I would like to give a shout out though to Just Room and to Sandbar Barbecue because they hosted one in October as well. And we're able to raise some funds and it really needs to see these local businesses partner with the city and provide just, just great service. And a very unique, I think, way to do some fundraising that draws the, draws a crowd. So I'm under the impression that there's some other local businesses that are also wanting to partner for similar events. So I think we should definitely utilize that. So and as always, Parks and Rec staff did a fantastic job with that and whatnot. So that's all I got.
I'll be quick, just to echo what everybody else said about the winter fest, the tree lighting. I was there for about an hour in the rain and then thank you for the Sandy police for having two police cars in the middle of the street blocking traffic so I could not be hit as I walked across. Because I was half blind at that time. And then we got over to the, to the trail and it was still dark. Because we ran because it was raining, but it came out within a minute. And then it was, it was pretty good. I mean, magnificent. So enjoyed that. Had a planning commission meeting last week. Got to listen to Patrick Deeper, Deppa, the new city, senior planner. They had a work session where he was talking about codes and how we can upgrade them. And he, he got specific on one topic that's near and dear to me, which is trees. And I, I encourage them to keep moving forward with that as I'm liaising to the planning commission. He talked about other towns in Oregon that he worked for that is a tree for tree. So if a builder takes a tree down, they plant another tree or pay for it. One for one. And he said our code is pretty lackadaisical when it comes to trees. And there could be some enhancement that we could do with that. So I encourage the planning department to take a look at that code and continue to work towards that. And then economic development, we haven't had a meeting in a while, but I think it's. Um, and then uh, economic development, we haven't had a meeting in a while, but I think it's gonna be for this Wednesday, so that's it. That's it all.
Thank you. Um, tree lighting, uh, yeah, we showed up for a little bit. There was a game going on, got the uh, tree lighted. But I, I, one thing I wanna say is, you know, I noticed between that and the park, um, you see the park staff running around a lot. How are we doing? What do you think? What do you think? Just please make sure it's clear, like, we think highly, right? Like, uh, they're doing an incredible job out there. Uh, that there's, they're way improved from even last year, which was a great year last year. Um, the weather has not done them any favors. They're out there doing constant maintenance on the park and the lighting and all that. And so uh, just please, on all of our behalf, make sure that they understand what a great job. Yeah, yeah.
I, I can't remember his last name, but his first name was Mark. And he overheard me and and my uh, girlfriend talking. We were looking for a donation box.
Yeah.
And he came over, he didn't recognize me and he says, oh, I'm, I'm the manager here. I could help you. So I asked him, where's the donation box so we can add money to help support next year? And he said, oh, we don't have that, but we've been thinking about something we saw in another town that I wanted to bring it up here. It's Q R Co.
Oh, yeah, right.
Stand Q R Co. To donate money to help build that fun time park.
Yeah.
You mentioned that. I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah. Uh, as you walked around Rotary Club was out there, library, our staff, volunteers, Kiwanis. I mean, it just was, I mean, it's cool. It's everything our community is supposed to be about, so. Um, uh, yeah. Uh, the community department, you know, and one thing I just wanted to say is, is that, yeah, they're being overworked right now. But man, are they coming together, right? Like, it's one of the cooler things in our city government right now that see, I think, is just the culture. And the relationships and how those folks work together, so that's really good to see. Uh, library meetings already been talked about. Um, I did just, and I don't wanna go into the weeds on this, but there is some talk going on at the county level about. How libraries are using their operating budgets and whether or not they can use those for things that can kind of be like capital maintenance expenses. Cause it's supposed to just go towards your expenses and whether, but you know, if you don't do these maintenance expenses, you can't do your programming, right?
And then where do they get the money?
Right, and so we've had, just to be clear, we've had some members of our library board really kind of pushing that this money shouldn't be used for capital expenditures. And so I did, uh, after talking to our library liaison, we cut out a meeting. I did let Chair Smith know. Um, just, uh, we're not saying, we're not as a city taking a position one way or the other on these expenditures. But it is not Sandy that's showing leadership behind, you know, this advocacy not to use it. So I, I did make that call this week. I just wanted to let you guys know. Uh, we have the urban renewal treat coming up. I'm meeting with Austin or Nasty as well. It sounds like the rest of you have. Uh, and then I wanted to remind everybody about the lighting of the menorah on December twelfth, next Tuesday at five thirty Centennial Plaza. With that, I will go ahead and conclude our meeting.